City, we are, it's on May 13th. We are starting with a city council work session. Our meetings are public and you're open to join us in person or by watching on the council's agenda page, Zoom, YouTube, or SLC TV. Hope you'll join us in whatever manner you feel most comfortable. This is a work session meeting today. There will be no public comment for our city council meetings, but on our formal meeting on May 20th will be the next opportunity for city council public comments. We do have a CRA meeting today that we will convene later and there will be public comment to the CRA on CRA-related items. That starts in about 45 minutes and then we'll come back into city council meeting after the CRA meeting. So, we're going to jump back and forth today. You're of course always welcome to give us feedback by mail, P O Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84114. You can also email council comments at slc.gov or call 801-535-7654. The first item on our city council agenda is informational economic forecasting presentation. We have with us Natalie Gockner, Director of the Kemsey Gardner Policy Institute. And she will present us the Gardner Institute's.
That's great.
Hi Natalie. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, it's great to be here. Thank you for having me. I'm welcome the opportunity to be here. I want to thank you for your partnership with the Kemsey Gardner Policy Institute. As you know, we're just, you know, a few blocks away. We're 10 years old now. 10 years ago, we, under President Pershing's leadership, decided to create a public policy institute that served the state and the city. And you partnered with us right from the beginning, recognizing the importance of having a really trusted think tank in the city. And so excited to share an economic update with you today. What a time to be an economist, right? A lot of uncertainty. I've never had a time when I get up and present on the economy where I have to watch my words so closely. But I want to walk you through a narrative and kind of think through this. So let's go to the next slide and let's look at, just starting at the state level and see what's happening. Our broadest measure of economic activity is gross domestic product. The numbers for 2024 just came in about five weeks ago and Utah led the nation in GDP growth. You can see it's at 4.5%. If you look over on the far right, you'll see it shows the US at 2.8. That's the average, right? So we're 4.5, the average is 2.8, and then you've got many states in the 1% and 2% range and even one in the negative territory. So we have the fastest growing economy in the nation and I spent all morning with Utah business leaders. And, you know, they feel some trepidation about what's happening in the economy, but I did have the ability to look at them and say, you're in the best place in the country, even, you know, with the challenges. So you all saw this, but US News and World Report, we'll go to the next slide, came out with their rankings a couple of weeks ago and they ranked for the third time in a row, Utah, the best state in the nation. It's pretty unusual place to be three years in a row. And among rankings, this is like the big kahuna ranking because it looks at education and crime and economy and fiscal discipline and natural resources, all sorts of things. And I only pointed up here, not to be in the, you know, pat ourselves on the back crowd, but more to say that this is a special place. There's some special things happening here and I don't have the data here that I didn't feel the need to present, but we presently have the lowest poverty rate in the country as a state. We have the highest household income when you adjust for cost of living in the country, highest household income when you adjust for cost of living, highest levels of social capital, highest levels of social upward mobility. And I think it's really important because where we are right now in Salt Lake City is the urban center that births a lot of this. So let's go to the next slide and just kind of think through this. At the city level, you all have more than I have on the economy. There's not a lot we can look at, but we do know how to look at population. And nearly half of the state's jobs are in Salt Lake County. So this is the home for the metro center. And about one in every four jobs in the state are right here in Salt Lake City. That's a stunning number. When you think of the breadth of the state, when you think of all the way down to St. George, when you think of what's going on in Utah County, think of Logan and Cache and Utah State University, but one in every four are in Salt Lake City. It's over 400,000 jobs. And then I think I've mentioned this to you before, but if we took the state and had everybody in the state weigh the same and said, where does the state balance? It's called the mean population center of the state. It's 21st South and State. Crazy, right? Yeah, it's crazy. I say it's crazy because we often forget how important it is that we maintain a strong urban center and we've been able to do that and we must keep doing that. And I'm going to show you how you're doing it. So let's go to the next slide and look at something interesting. So this is, this is decennial years. These are the best population numbers we get because it's an actual count, not an estimate. And you see from the 1900s, Salt Lake City getting up to 189,000 people, but then you see these consecutive decades of decline where the city was contracting in people. Beginning in 2000, that turned around and we increased in 2000, we increased in 2010, and we increased in 2020. This is, this is complete renewal. This is revitalization. This is a city that was in decline, that figured out how to invest in a Broadway theater, how to invest in transit, how to invest in professional sports, how to, you know, invest in housing and community building that resurrected this city in my judgment. Because just think what would have happened if that would have kept going down. All right, let's go to the next one. These are provisional numbers, but at the Gardner Institute, we do population estimates. That 2024 number has not been released yet. I'm just calling it provisional and sharing it with you today, but we're estimating a population in the city, just over 220,000 people. Look at your growth rate from 2023 to 2024, a 4% growth rate. Now, the state, at that same timeframe, grew by 1.5%. That's one of the fastest growing states in the country and you are double that in the central city. This is, this is not something that I would have predicted 15 years ago, for example. Now, one thing that you might remember, if you look at that big jump from 2022 to 2023, that's a really big growth rate of 7%. That includes the state prison. So it's a little artificial there. You have a group quarters that, you know, move from out of the city into the city, but then it's there in 2023, so we don't count it again in 2024 as a growth rate. It's there in the pop number, but that 4% is what we're seeing all around us. It's dynamic urban living. It's, it's, you know, neighborhoods that are investing and putting in more housing and whatnot. If we go to the next slide, the basis for population estimates are the housing unit growth. So I just wanted you to see your housing unit growth rates of 5.8, 8.6, 6.3%. This is measured number of permitted housing units constructed in city boundaries. So, oh, and then let's just look at one more. I think this is interesting. Let's go one more slide here. So again, these are provisional numbers. We haven't quite released them yet, but I've mentioned the state's grown at 1.5%, the city grown at 4%. I wanted to show you some peer cities. So Lehigh, center of Silicon Slopes, is growing at 2.8%. Provo and Orem, legacy cities in this state, below 1%. Sandy, contracting. West Jordan, contracting. Anyway, part of why I wanted to show you this is Salt Lake City is on the leaderboard for activity, for dynamism, for things happening. Yeah.
Natalie, that doesn't mean that the number of households likely stayed the same in Sandy, just the family size? People moved out or what do you think accounts for that?
Yeah, well, you would have, oh, you might have vacant homes. You might have definitely family size. This is mostly kids leaving.
Kids leaving.
Leaving the parents behind, yeah.
That's what I was.
A lot of that gentrification.
I grew up in Sandy and Lex.
Yeah. And they go through a maturation and this isn't anything, I mean, this is both an incredible opportunity for the city, but also an amazing challenge, obviously. But what is, what is really unique to me about it is we're in an elite economy nationwide as a state and the urban center is participating and contributing to the economic vibrancy of the state in a big way. And I, population's my best way to look at that. Okay, that's all the good news. Well, because I'm going to, I'm going to talk about economic uncertainty a little bit, but as a first point, and the mayor's office asked this, me to share this with them, and so I've shared it with the cabinet there, but we do have a job market right now that's still really strong in the state and in the country. So let's go to the next slide and this is just showing you job growth. The red is Utah, the gray is the US, going back to 2000. See how the red lines above the gray line, we typically grow faster than the nation. You see COVID, those vertical bars are recessions, those gray bars. You can see this glide path coming down after COVID, but Utah economy growing about 1.7%, nation growing about 1.2. These are healthy numbers. They're strong. The so-called, you know, recession that everyone's looking for hasn't, is not apparent in these numbers yet. Now let's go to the next slide, which is unemployment. This is one of the things you would expect unemployment to tick up quite a bit in a recession. Again, Utah's in red here, lower than the nation, but our unemployment rate has decreased now for three consecutive months in Utah. It's interesting, isn't it? The nation's ticking up, you can see that, but none of this would suggest pants on fire. This is, this is a strong labor market that continues to be in many ways the envy of the world. US economy is among the strongest in the world and of course, Utah leading that. Here's the tough thing. Let's go to the next slide. We are a part of what I would think is a self-inflicted economic harm caused by tariffs. And as this started, I pulled out my economic textbooks, my principles textbook, my micro textbook, my macro textbook, my intermediate, my, you know, they all say the same thing. They all agree, and this is one thing that, you know, economists don't agree on a lot of things, but, but we don't like tariffs because it's a tax on trade. And so if I, Dan, if I do an exchange with you, I only do it because I benefit and you only do it because you benefit. If you don't, you don't do it. And so trade is efficient and it grows and it's how we have had so much prosperity in the world and in this country. Before the current administration, the effective tariff rate was 1%. In the first Trump term, it went up to 3%. President Biden kept all those, so it stayed at 3%. I don't know what that bottom bar will be. Most of the forecasting entities, the only thing they agree upon is it's going to be higher than three. And that has an effect. So if we look at the next slide, this is at the national level, gross domestic product. Over on the far left, those kind of blue-purple numbers, that's the pandemic. Those, ignore those. Those are fake economy, high numbers inflated by stimulus, but it's just interesting perspective. Then we had a quarter of negative GDP growth, but then we got all those 2%, 3%, even a 4% GDP growth rate. That's been, that's been the envy of the world, having that strong of growth. And now we look at first quarter 2025 and you see it went negative, first time in a while. And then those yellow bars are Wells Fargo current forecast, although they keep changing it. I think they've gone a little bit more positive now, but that's part of the point is there's uncertainty. And you could make the argument that those bottom, sorry, those far right, those four bars on the right are really the beginnings of a recession in the forecast. Now recessions, they ebb and flow. We have a business cycle, we get through them, they're not the be all end all, but if I, it looks like I pulled it out of my slide deck, but right now, the probability of a recession among most economists is somewhere in the 45% to 60% range. So flip of a coin. We'll see. Why is that? Let's go to the next one. There's something called the Uncertainty Index. This is a group of economists that look at Economist Magazine Country Reports. So looking at the whole world, that's why it's the World Uncertainty Index. And they look at reports on the term uncertainty or any word that is like uncertainty. And they just have this stunning, you know, this shows you, this is a global trade war. Look at the uncertainty caused globally. It's more than during the pandemic. There's another measure, let's go to the next one, that shows what they call policy uncertainty. This one, they look at the 10 largest newspapers and look at stories on uncertainty and create an index on it. They also look at the major forecasting firms like Moody's or Goldman and see the disparity in their forecasts. And if there's a lot of disparity, that's uncertainty. So anyway, you see the pandemic is off the charts, but look at how high the policy uncertainty is. And then a little bit closer to home, if we go to the next one. We survey every month consumer sentiment in Utah and the, and the University of Michigan does it for the US. So the gray is the US, look at the decline in the last few months, just a really stunning freefall in consumer sentiment. And you can see Utah's is doing not so much, but still doing it. And so you've got a consumer that's feeling a little funky, you've got businesses with a lot of uncertainty, so they're not hiring or they're pausing, they're not investing. And eventually that's going to show up in the numbers. This should be a leading indicator to all of us. Last thing I want to share and then we can open up for questions is I just want to think just a little bit more about what's happening in Salt Lake City and the economy. I'm going to lean heavily here on the tourism sector as being the center of sports and entertainment for our state. If you look at the next graph, it's showing you job growth by industry. And I wanted you to note leisure and hospitality declining at 2%. So from March of 2023 to March of 2024, it got smaller. This is the tourism sector getting smaller. If we go to the next slide, you'll see that there's a lot of things that we're looking at there. The industry's contracting, international travel is tempered by these trade wars. We've had these cuts in the national park, 13% declines. This isn't really affecting yet, but I'm really mindful of downtown redevelopment and a partial shutdown that displaces economic activity around the corner. I think a little bit about the piling on of tariffs and downtown redevelopment and less international visitors, yada, yada, yada. Temple Square becomes a bright spot in that and you'll know more about that than I do, but my belief is that we will see a surge in visitors to this city as part of the reopening. I just know the people involved and what they're planning on and what they've done to like take it down, to bring it back. And I think that will be a real plus to the city, city's economy. Let's look at this next slide. This is, this is kind of interesting. This is a group called Tourism Economics. They are the national leaders on tourism forecasts and they've revised their forecast three times in recent months. And they went from an 8.8% year-over-change for 2025 to a minus three and now they're to a minus nine. So this is something that's expected and well-known in the leisure and hospitality sector that we're going to feel some pain from that contraction. So I would expect in city coffers that your budget managers and CFOs and whatnot are very mindful of sales tax and transit room taxes and all of the tourism taxes that are associated with this. So my last thing is just to show you some of these equilibrating forces. Let's go to the last slide here. On the positive side, you are the economic center of the most successful economy in the country. You have public, or we, I should say, have public and private investment in our urban center, including what's happening in Temple Square. We have strong population growth, remarkable workforce. I didn't share the date on that, but we believe we have the third most well-trained, well-educated workforce in the country here in Utah. And then the life quality, it never stops to amaze me how much, how beautiful this place is. On the negative, we have these national headwinds that will affect us. We have the visitor economy that will be impacted and I can't do a presentation without mentioning the housing shortage is still a problem for the state and for the, obviously for this city. So that's what I prepared to share with you. Let's just open it up for questions. I hope that was something like what you were hoping for, but sets a context of a lot of promise in this economy, but we're in sort of risky waters and we'll get through it.
Council members, Councilwoman Petrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, pleasure.
Even bad news coming from you like somehow calms me because at least I know where I stand.
Oh, thank you.
I can trust it. So as we're looking at it in our budget book, 42% of our general fund comes from sales tax. So you would think in a state that politically aligns so closely with federal that we would have a greater tolerance for the uncertainty, but with that sentiment going down, it feels like as a policymaker whose priority is not to displace by taxation people from their homes, that a reliance on sales tax or a building with that as a basis is more tenuous than in the past. Is that a correct conclusion that I'm drawing?
Yeah, if I understand what you're saying, that you have different tax sources and some are more volatile than others and sales tax is one of those that very much responds to the business cycle, the ebbs and flows, and that would be very true. You know, the property taxes, the more stable. Interesting in our work, I realize the city doesn't have an income tax, but at the state level, the income tax has been even more volatile than sales tax. It's because of capital gains. It's because of corporate income and capital gains. But yeah, that's something you have to watch. And I will just say that I want to compliment city, you know, staff and leaders because in my interaction with city staff, they, they're very good and they know what they're doing.
Do you again?
Thanks for the numbers and appreciate the conversation. My question is on the recession side and then we talked about recession and then we talked about inflation at the same time. And how they working in concert here and if, if the recession is really deep, how's that affecting the entire, since it's so uncertain, the inflational pressures that we're going to see also? How's that play out? And then with the unemployment, what do you, what's your cloudy crystal ball say?
Yeah, so in regards to unemployment and inflation, so this is a very interesting recession if it happens because it will be self-inflicted. I've never heard of it. Recession's are very painful, you know, so why do you do this? Just give you a sense, in a, in typical times, Utah has about 55,000 people unemployed. When we go into recession, that pops up to 110, 120,000. You know, it doubles the number of families in distress. That's painful. But because it's self-inflicted, some other ways as recessions happen is because of structural imbalances, shortages, exogenous shocks, things you don't control. This one, because we control it, it's not like we can turn it on and off, but we can do it more than other recessions. So a reason many of the economists aren't forecasting a recession right now is because as things start to look bad, the administration will change and come to the rescue, which we've seen now how many times? Five or six times. And so I'm of the opinion that, I'm in the 50/50 odds camp. I think the, I mean, I don't want to be political, but the midterm elections will loom large here. And so you've got just a few more months where you can kind of, you know, try to have a dial on the economy. And then you've got to get really serious about not taking so many risks, policy risks, if you will. I want to be really clear though, that there is something, rebalancing global trade is obviously what they're trying to do. And if they negotiate all of our trade agreements to be more advantageous to us, that will help us in the long term. So there's that. It's just it's so painful getting there. And then there's tax policy you have to look at with it. And as you know, they're very much trying, when I say they, the administration in Washington's very much trying to figure out a tax cut that will do its thing. And then they also have regulatory reform. So the combination of regulatory reform, tax reform, and trade reform is the economic package that is being put together. It's very bold. You can say it's been quite reckless in its implementation. They could still do some good with it. So wait to see.
Okay, Wharton and then Lopez Chavez.
So I don't intend this to be political either, but some, I've heard some say that there are businesses that are fleeing Salt Lake City. And to me, that doesn't seem true, but you know, I tried to think about it and just anecdotally about whether or not that seems like it's the case. Is there any data to support that?
Fleeing.
Yeah.
You know, it's not showing up in the population data. The employment data is much more difficult to get your hands on, a much softer number. I guess I would be looking at, you know, building permits and see what kind of trends you see there. I'm not aware of businesses fleeing the city in anything I'm seeing. Thank you. Yeah.
Lopez Chavez.
Thank you for coming in Natalie. My question is related to how we can encourage or overcome some of those negative public consumer sentiments in the downtown, specifically related to our implementation of the Public Safety Plan and construction mitigation.
Yeah. Let me just restate the question. So you've got new things happening in the city and, and some of the construction will be disruptive. You have a new public safety plan that's going to do some things and you're just trying to mitigate the impacts, the effects of those.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. You know, I was a part of the last major rebuild of downtown Salt Lake City. I, you know, we coined the term, or sorry, Salt Lake Rising, downtown rising. And there was an amazing effort to deal with mitigation during the construction. Some of you will know or remember that when Trax went up Main Street, it was incredibly harmful. It took forever and it really hurt businesses. And there was a determination not to do that again with City Creek Center. And the Salt Lake Chamber, the Downtown Alliance and the city jointly worked so closely to do a lot of construction mitigation and I think model and was really terrific. A lot of communication. When they built light rail up Fourth South University Boulevard, did a much better job, you know, than on Main Street. So, you know, my thinking there is that we rise or fall together, you know, in doing these things. And the best thing that the city can do, that the county can do, the state can do, residents can do, is, is work together to solve these problems. And it sounds kind of cliche, but that's, that's the solution, is connecting, conversations, work groups, strategies, data, and we're really good at that.
My secondary question Natalie is, in the inverse of recessions, I'd love to better understand, how can Salt Lake City capitalize on some of these weaker economic points in Utah so we can attract industry into a capital, into a burgeoning capital city?
Mm-hmm. Thanks for the question. I mean, I think, if I were trying to think front and center, I'd put a lot of thought into the Salt Lake City School District. I think that workforce and education are critical and that to the degree that public education is strong in Salt Lake City, it will help the Salt Lake City economy. That's one place I would go. Another place I would look at is all the things that are supportive of families. Parks, trails, open space, obviously safety, these sorts of things. I'm just thinking of life quality. Salt Lake City is different than any place in the state. It is of an urban character and a density that you just don't find elsewhere. And it's very attractive to creative populations, to young populations and to, you know, financial service sector. I'm just trying to think of the, the broad swath of, of industries that are very present in the city. Medical devices, insurance, business services, healthcare, obviously education and higher education with Westminster and University of Utah and even Slick's presence here and the like, and Sign College. So anyway, I would be very mindful of the core fundamentals, like the building blocks of a great economy, and that tends to come to workforce and physical infrastructure and then human capital, meaning the way that we get along and talk and collaborate together. You noticed I didn't say like tax incentives. I mean, because, because there's something there, but I don't think that that is, those are sort of like on the margin. The real thing is a great community.
I was surprised by the tourism data that you shared with us. Can you help me understand that? Like if I think of what's in the news and the headlines that we're hearing, they're related to trade. And, and that's like goods that are crossing the ocean, but it's not, people aren't being tariffed when they come into our country. So what, how, where's the link there? Are they completely unrelated?
Border crossings are really down. You know, we know that in the data. We also know that there's a lot of, let's take our neighbors to the north, Canada's just mad at us. They're just not coming. If you look at some, you know, Airbnb type data, you see a lot of cancellations and whatnot. Some of them, I think it's a protest. Some of them, I think it's also just a concern about getting here and what's going on here.
Okay, makes sense.
And then you go to the national park experience. In the slides, there was some data about how visitation's done this and employment's done this, you know, and so maybe the quality of the experience isn't what it would be and they're reading about it and they're seeing that. So those are some of the things going on. And then also, I mean, you know, the Delta Center can't be doing anything right now because it's under construction, you know, so that, that affects, that's a short-term thing, but, but we're seeing it in the data and we're not alone. It's not a Utah thing, it's a national thing.
Thank you for, for all the interesting data that helps us trying to wrap our head around what's going on in the, in the country and the world around us and, and all the many things that could impact our community. And it seems like Salt Lake and Utah in general, you know, we are still a very attractive place to live and play and to raise families and to, granted all these unknowns and how they are going to ultimately affect us, but one of the takeaways from me is that the diversification of our economy has been beneficial to us and that we can survive some of these impacts because there are too many different angles of our economy here in Utah and in Salt Lake itself. One of the challenges I see, even in our best times in communities like the ones I represent on the west side, relate to the quality of jobs that many of my neighbors access or know to access. And while the economic... And while the economic forecast or the current situation of our economy may be positive, many people in our community, even with a low unemployment, are still being pointing between multiple jobs to make ends meet. And those jobs maybe do exist out there, maybe very close to their houses. And that is a challenge that I, I don't know if you have any advice, but it seems to me one of the biggest challenges for upward mobility for many members of our own communities here in Utah and in Salt Lake is to find those jobs that are life changing, that are, you know, family making. And it seems to me that that is the thing that is stopping a lot of the progress that I don't know how to, from my position, I don't know how to help connect.
Yeah. You've asked a very challenging question, and I applaud you for asking it. It was really a privilege about two weeks ago to have Dr. Raj Chetty in town. He's the Harvard economist that's done so much work on upward mobility. He was an Impact Scholar for the University of Utah, and I hope some of you got to see some of the coverage of his visit. He, but we're in the part, we're in the process right now forming a partnership with his team. It's called Opportunity Insights, to do some more case studies to understand upward mobility in our state and with a focus on what I'll call the Northwest County, Northwest Valley. So starting from Taylorsville and West Valley and Kearns and moving its way to West Salt Lake City. We've sort of have a little geography that we're trying to look at. And what he does is he anonymizes data and then tracks it over time. So you look at a cohort, what did their parents do and then what did the kids do over time? And in the work that they've done both here and elsewhere, the number one thing that they find, well, I mean, I should let him speak for his own work, but my reading of his work is that one of the highest interventions, one of the best interventions you can do is integration. This idea that when we separate, we don't get as good of outcomes. So I'm talking about socio-economic integration versus socio-economic separation. So that's one of the findings. So in a policy application of that would be that in your housing vouchers, whatnot, make sure that the housing vouchers are going to households that are integrating socio-economics and not isolating them. Just as an example. So let's keep in contact because we're going to be doing more work on that. It's fascinating work because it's causal. It's not just a guess, it's basically you're tracking actual data. And I think there's some insights that we could learn.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd love to learn more about your suggestion about housing vouchers going to.
Say that again.
You said about the housing choice vouchers going to families that are more integrated? Could you?
Well, in neighborhoods. So rather than giving the vouchers to where the socio-economics are all the same, give the vouchers in places where you get more mix.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Geography.
Yes.
So like not concentrating deeply affordable all in one place?
Yes. That's a better way of saying it, for sure.
Councilwoman Pietro?
So you mentioned the housing shortage, and you mentioned how elite our economy is. But we often take heat, especially because of our position as the counter-majoritarian center, for our role in how expensive. We are now in the top ten of states for housing costs.
That's right.
How do we square that? And especially as we're trying to square that and be really proactive, we're finding that the traditional role of economics is almost forcing us into replicating historical mistakes we know we don't want to make. So for instance, when nonprofits that offer rehabilitative services go out with their budget to find a parcel or a building, they tend to find them in the places that are historically redlined, that are already home to so many other services. And then the forces of economics protect other areas of the city that have never had those things present.
Right.
And so it reinforces NIMBYism, it reinforces the history of redlining, it reinforces schools that are stressed out and have parents who work three jobs and other schools that have all stay-at-home moms available to support the learning process. So as we're squaring those realities, do you have any guidance for how we can outsmart economics? Because we don't, I mean, we don't have a general fund enough to counteract the massive influx of capital, even at a slowed pace. The capital coming in to build here is difficult to contain.
Yeah. Well, you guys are asking me really hard questions. I would just say that I think it's really hard to outsmart economics because the powers of the market are so great. I agree with you, Victoria, that we've learned something from the past and we should not replicate, you know, mistakes. Something I would think about is, there's, you know, there's obviously the building side and the supply side, but I'd also think about the demand side quite a bit. And in that way, I'd think about investing in children and investing in households and families and public education and like, because we have this interesting thing where we have, it's the ninth highest single-family housing price in the country right now, but we have the highest household incomes after adjusting for purchase price parity. And it's creating two Utahs. There's the Utah that owns a home and the Utah that doesn't. And if you carry that out for many, many years in a row, that's not, that's not helpful. Yeah. And so we need to grow Utahns that are making family-supporting jobs, and we need to have more supply of housing. Those are the only two things I can think of. Yeah. Can I get a softball question to end?
Oh, I don't have that.
Natalie, why are you so good at economics?
Come on, someone bring me one.
I mean, this is really great information, council members and the other. We have five minutes left scheduled.
I think I have one more. Certainly, our city is going through a lot of changes from, you know, you talk about subsidies and, you know, some of these major interests on sports and entertainment and obviously, our housing market is telling us that there's a lot of, you know, need for, people want to live here and they see the value of all the things that are happening. You know, and I'm asking you maybe to get the crystal ball out there and tell us, there is a level of risk on investing on major things when there is this level of uncertainty at the same time happening that we have no control over with the terrorists and the economy and the uncertainty and the interest rates and the inflation and all of these things that are affecting our neighbors. And at the same time, we're asking, in many cases, from our neighbors to pitch in a little more for a bond or for a tax increase that we probably need to sustain the growth. How do we marry these two ideas, in your opinion, and seeing these numbers? And again, you know, ultimately, I understand that this question is very challenging and it's hard to answer, but if you have any advice for us.
Well, yeah, my general reaction is I'm a big supporter of what the city's doing. Let's take some of these things one at a time. Inflation is on its, on a very slow crawl back to target. You know, it's two, two point four, two point six percent. We want to get it to two percent. You know, it's going to be okay. Unemployment, I think there's a chance that it'll start to rise and we could have, I've said a flip of a coin, a recession, but I think it would be a mild one. We'll get through it. We've been through them before. It's not a financial crisis. Because it's self inflicted, we can also kind of inflict our way out of it. At least, you know, it'll do some damage, but we'll get through it. Again, we're in the, we're in the best state, and if you're going to be in any state, be in Utah. And if you're going to be in Utah, be in urban Utah. And this is the center of both of those. You know, I testified to the council before, but if you don't invest in the downtown, it deteriorates. And there is a public interest to the whole state, to the county, to the city, to have a vibrant downtown. Nobody wants a downtown that's hollowed out and boarded up and full of, well, not full of activity, empty. And that sounds dramatic, but we have evidence of it all around. And I think your most powerful tool to reinvest in your downtown is professional sports, and I believe that because it's a monopoly. Nobody else has it. So if you are an NBA fan, this is where you come. You know, if you do retail trade, you can go a lot of places. And is there risk? Absolutely. And that's why you got to be on your job and, you know, working closely and trying to manage things. You know, we hosted Olympic Games and had two major, major problems, a bid scandal and nine eleven. It was, you know, unimaginable how difficult those two things were. And then we ended up having the best games ever, right? They were just stunning. So I'm going to take a positive view on it and think, are we doing the right things? You know, inflation, we're going to, you know, you can go to some negative center, but inflation's going to be okay. Unemployment's going to be okay. The policies that are afoot, to the degree they're damaging, they'll moderate them. And we'll get through this. And we're in the best place to do it, and you're making bets on downtown that are worth it to the community. And the whole state's making a bet with you. And I think it's the right decision.
Thank you so much, Natalie, for being here. Oh, Councilmember Young.
So I just wanted to thank you. You came and spoke with us when we were trying to make decisions about the downtown corridor. And I just wanted to share with you that your presentation was invaluable to me as a council member, not just in terms of education, but also in terms of helping to educate my neighbors on what the needs were and why taking the action steps that we were being asked to do was in the best interest of not just the folks who live downtown, but across the entire city. So I wanted to reflect to you that I use that YouTube. I knew by the minute and second when you would start speaking, and I was like, listen to Natalie. Here is her, you know, education for all of us, but you presented it in a way that not only resonated with me, resonated with many of the folks that I represent. And I just wanted to share that because I appreciate that you bring that expertise and share that with Salt Lake City.
It's my pleasure. And I tell you, I'm partly able to do it because the city is a supporter to the entity that I lead. You know, we, I tell people, you can't just have a light switch and turn on a public policy institute and then turn it off. So, you know, COVID comes and you need a plan, an economic plan. It helps to already have all that expertise available. And the city has been a founding sponsor of the Kempsey Gardner Policy Institute, and anytime you call us, we answer, so.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Last comment to Pietro.
Can I ask one softball?
Oh, please.
Okay. So as we navigate the uncertainty here, I think all of us feel not just the burden of our individual thirty thousand constituents that we represent, but the collective, you know, two hundred twenty seven thousand. If you could give us one piece of advice as a guiding principle as we make policy, I know every time we put a regulation on, we're terrified it's going to hurt people. Every time we take one away, we're terrified it's going to hurt people. If you could give us one guiding piece or a couple pieces of guiding principle advice as we make policy during this time, what would you tell us?
You think it's a softball, but it's a really, no, it's something that I think's super important, but it's not really soft. But I would, I would reaffirm and reinvest in your relationship with the state of Utah. Yeah, you know, and I say that because, because both the city and the state need each other. And there's a social contract there that must be productive. And, you know, we have a lot of examples in state history where there's been big divides, and we've brought them together. And I've watched some of those up close and personal, and they have typically occurred because outside of the limelight, leaders who care deeply about our state, our city, talk and represent. You are amazing council members, and you're duly elected and you're doing the job of your constituents, and that must be respected. And at the same time, it doesn't, it's not going to help the state to have a city that is not thriving. You know, this is the front door to our state. So that's what I would do, is find ways to reinvest in that relationship. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Council members and for the public, we're now going to recess as the city council and reconvene immediately as the CRA board. So I'll look for a motion to do so.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn as the city council and resume our meeting at three thirty and that we can reconvene as the community reinvestment agency.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Warren, second by Councilmember Dugan. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we are now convened as the CRA. We are coming back to city council meeting immediately following the CRA meeting.
So I will entertain a motion to reconvene as the RDA, or sorry, the CRA board and so that we can do that, and then to adjourn and then reconvene as the city council. And I will just chair the CRA meeting for that vote.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reconvene as the CRA board.
Second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Any opposed? Okay, so yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda for this.
Second.
CRA.
CRA.
All right, great. Any questions about the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, then that passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the city council.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn as the CRA board and convene as a city council.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great.
Sorry, that's my fault.
It's all right. Feels good to be back, doesn't it? Okay, so here we are as the city council and the, again, again, this is our third time convening today, believe it, yes. So that might be a record, actually. Okay, so we are on agenda item number two, which is a resolution for the issuance of Airport Revenue Bonds Series 2025. And we've got Nick Tarbit from council staff, we've got Bill Wyatt, Executive Director of Airports, and Brian Butler, Airport Chief Financial Officer. Thanks for being here.
So, Mr. Chair, this briefing from airport staff is about a resolution that would authorize the issuance and sale of up to $700 million of airport revenue bonds for the purpose of financing capital improvements to the Salt Lake City International Airport. The current plan calls for the bonds to go to market in August of this year after the council holds a July public hearing. With that, we'll let Brian and Bill go.
All right, Council Chair, members of the council, thank you so much. So this marks the end of seeking new money for the construction of the airport redevelopment program. When we're done with this sale, assuming it is, we were given permission to do this, we'll have roughly $4 billion worth of debt. We have the entire project, you know, ninety nine point nine 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 percent of the project under contract currently. And so now we're here to pay for it, basically. It is obviously a very, shall I say, volatile time in the market for municipal debt. Not much we can really do about that. And even though I'm sure there will be changes here in the short term, I don't know that they'll be significant enough to warrant any kind of changes on our part, but we've, we're prepared for that. And I'll let Brian do the presentation, obviously interrupted anytime you have any questions about what we're doing.
Okay, thanks, Bill. If we can go to the next slide, I'm going to go pretty high level. If you guys have detailed questions or you want to ask specific questions, feel free to interject at any time. This is the very first slide, it's a busy slide, but it just kind of reinforces that we've been at this since 2014. Ever since 2023, we've been opening gates every single year. We opened gates in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, and then we're completing this program in 2026. So if we go to the next slide, it really gives you a graphical representation of where we are today. Here, everything in yellow are the gates that are currently open. We have seventy three gates that are open. You'll notice the pink and the purple gates, there's ten gates that are going to be opening in October of 2025. And then we have eleven gates that will be opening in October of 2026. At the very end of concourse B, you'll see there's a little kind of bump out. That's what we call our permanent hard stand solution, unlike when we were during COVID and we kind of had to come up with, you know, a way to fit all the planes into half of an airport, and we did a temporary hard stand. This was always envisioned to kind of give us the capacity to grow into the facilities and kind of push out concourse C for another ten to twelve years. and kind of push out concourse C for another 10 to 12 years. So if you go to the next slide, it's just a picture that kind of shows you the, the construction of the phase four gates. It's 16 gates, but then you'll see this is kind of a covered walkway where the bus plaza will come, it'll pick you up, and then it'll take you directly to your aircraft. We don't envision needing these hard stand positions in the near future, but they're there and they're available when we need them. So if we go to the next slide, this is the most important slide in the entire presentation. And it's really kind of the schedule. You'll see the very first line item is we're meeting with you today to kind of talk about, you know, what we're asking you to approve in the bond resolution. We're going to ask you on June 3rd in the formal session to actually adopt the bond resolution. And then we're working with the attorney's office and the recorder's office. And on June 9th, we're going to put out a notice of the bonds to be issued, which starts the 30-day contest period, and also advertise a public hearing that we need you to hold on July 1st. After that, we've already kind of reached out to the rating agencies and they're going to be coming to Salt Lake City. We have Moody's, Standard and Poor's, and Kroll. And we're going to give them our formal presentation. We're very optimistic that we'll get at least an upgrade from Moody's. We received upgrades last year from both S and P and Kroll. But we're also going to take them on a tour of kind of the flight simulators for Delta and kind of show them, you know, here's all the construction we've been doing, but Delta's also very committed outside of the terminal complex. We plan to get our ratings the middle of July. We will actually go travel to New York and do the bond pricing the week of July 21st. And then the closing would be the first week of August. Any questions on the schedule? I know it is in the staff packet that Nick put together. Okay. If we go to the next slide, just want to give you a few highlights of what's actually in the bond resolution. So we're, we anticipate needing to borrow about 634 million. We're asking for authorization to go up to 700 million, just with all the volatility in the market, with interest rates going up and down. It may cause that par amount of bonds to go up. It may cause it to come down. So that's why we're giving ourselves a little bit of cushion. Based on current market rates and a 50 basis cushion, we think that we would issue these at 5.55. It's more likely to come in closer to low fives if everything holds true, based on what we know today. If for any reason interest rates just got crazy and it went above six and a half percent, we just would not proceed with this bond issuance. We always ask for flexibility to maybe go out to 40 years on these bonds. We have historically always gone 30 years on our debt with a 10-year call. And that's the plan this, this time as well, but we always ask for that flexibility just to have that during pricing. And then the bond proceeds will fund a little bit of capitalized interest between this year and next year when we're done with the construction. And then we always put some money in reserve for our debt service reserve fund. If you go to the next slide. This is just a snapshot. It's a pie chart. How did we actually fund this $5.13 billion project? And, you know, Bill will always mention in our, our budget briefings, you know, how much money the airports contributed. You can see it's just over 9% of $5 billion, so over $500 million of airport cash is going into that. But you can also see other sources of funds, whether they're federal grants, whether they're passenger facility charges or customer facility charges. But about 75% of this entire project will be backed by debt. As Bill mentioned, it's 3.84 billion. We've already started paying some of that down and we're getting ready to, in 2027, start being able to refinance some of that debt. We go to the next slide. It kind of gives you a history of all the different bond issuances we've done. And you'll see that historically we've been in the low fours. If you remember, interest rates in 2021, we were almost, we were able to borrow 900 million at 2.9%. And so it always averages out. And so for us, it's not based on where we think market rates are going to be, but it's when is the construction going to happen and when do we have to pay those invoices? So if you average this out, we're still at a very attractive level. Delta is very well aware of this. Obviously, the airlines are responsible for paying the debt associated with this, but you can kind of see the, the assumed maturity dates associated with that. So if you go to the next slide, we're almost done. This just kind of gives you kind of the breakdown of the bonds. So we'd issue 633 million. We think we'll get about 5 million in, in premium on that. And then of the 638, 560 million would go into the construction fund. 31 million would be used to pay interest costs before the facilities are, are completed. We do put about $45 million into a rainy day fund called the debt service reserve fund. And then it's just under $3 million for, to pay all the lawyers, all the consultants to get the transaction done. And then the very last slide, I just throw it in there just to kind of help you understand when you borrow 600 million, you know, what would your mortgage be if you were buying a house for 600 million? It's about $45 million a year for 30 years. So I would not advise getting a mortgage for 600 million.
This is a really nice house.
It is a very nice house. So I think that's the end of the presentation, but happy to answer any questions. I think I shocked everybody with that slide.
So if you cannot, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
If you cannot get the terms that you set forth in that slide as the maximums, we just don't finish the airport right now and we wait a year?
No, not necessarily. So if you remember, a year ago, we came to council and we asked for authorization to get a line of credit for $300 million. We would use that line of credit. Currently, we have 200 million drawn up against that line of credit. We still have 100 million and we would just draw it out and try to ride the wave out of some of this volatility and price at a different time.
It gets better.
That's why we did that in the first place, right after COVID, just to give ourselves a little bit of flexibility because then and now it's just very volatile.
Yeah. Okay. Great. At least there's a plan B.
There's always contingencies.
Yeah.
Does the possibility of a recession influence us all? I, I know like interest rates potentially could be impacted, but does the availability of people to buy the bonds or anything like that change with the recession? Or the likelihood of just being able to sell?
You know, I would say a couple of things about that. First, you could kind of argue that we're in a recession now, but because of all of the factors that have, that are sort of on the table at the moment, financings like this haven't improved. Ordinarily, you'd think, oh, boy, this is a great time to do it. They've gotten more expensive. And so, you know, it's, a lot of people would say we're heading for a recession. That doesn't necessarily guarantee a better condition for borrowing in markets like this.
I would just say, you know, we work with all these large financial institutions that have retirement savings. People are investing. They're seeing this as an opportunity. They can earn 5% almost guaranteed money. It's not a treasury, but you know, no airport has ever defaulted on their debt. And so if they're wanting to maybe take some of that volatility out of the stock market and put it into fixed income, this is a very lucrative and there's always, we're going in July because that's when a lot of redemptions happen in these major mutual fund companies, a lot of these life insurance companies. And it's just a favorable time for us to go. And there's a lot of opportunities for investors because they can't just put it in cash. If they have a directive to invest it in a specific fund, they've got to go ahead and, you know, put it to play.
So you said this is our last round of bond, it, bonds that we would issue, but what about concourse three and that plan?
Well, two things. It's not our last bond issue. It's our last new money bond issue. So from this point forward and really beginning in 2027, the airport will be involved in a long, long series of refinancings. And so 2027, the bonds become callable, the first issue after 10 years in our case. And it's almost always desirable to call those bonds and refinance them. And so that's a very standard thing in the business. So concourse C is, in our current master plan, is envisioned at a certain volume level of passengers. That's really what would drive the decision-making around that. I think I can say that the airlines are going to want to see a significant portion of this debt paid off first before accumulating more. And they're also going to work very hard to drive as much efficiency as they can possibly get out of the existing facilities. And I would say there is a lot there to be got. So we'll see a series of infrastructure improvements and other things that will just increase the number of turn times per gate. If you had just, you know, one additional turn time per gate, that's 94 a day. So that's a lot. And I think that's where the carriers are going to push for some time. If there is a recession, for example, that'll stretch out the, the period of time during which you'd be thinking about building a new concourse as well. I'd say, you know, mid, mid 30s, there will be serious conversations happening likely unless, you know, the world changes in some ways that we can't currently predict.
Okay.
Councilmember Boy. You know, I, I appreciate the work that you guys have, have done to, to make our airport, you know, a gem of, you know, our region, our state. And I am very excited for all the changes and, and the amenities that you are adding to each of the, the concourses. And I, I'm excited for, for all of those. I guess this is a question that is not really related to your bond, you know, that you're presenting today, but since I have you here, I think it could be fun to, to talk about this, but there is, the airports and air traffic control is, is quite a bit in the news every day. And certainly I learned that a traffic control, it really is not something that you really control as the airport. And I, are there any of those impacts that are affecting us? I'm sure that, you know, since this whole system is connected in some way, that there are some. And have you identified any ways that, you know, I'm sure that this is a conversation many other airports are probably having too, is that something that could be done from your side to prevent these things from devolving here? I would love to, to hear your, your thoughts about this and maybe educating me and the public about how this works.
Yeah. So I think it's, we don't have a lot of visibility into what's happening under the covers, to be blunt. But as you probably know, located immediately proximate to the, the airport is something called Salt Lake Center. And it is the FAA's facility that controls all air traffic from the Mexican border to the Canadian border in the Intermountain West. It's a really good thing that we have that here. It's a, we're fortunate, frankly, to have that in addition to the local air traffic control. My, my take on this, I can understand why Newark is one of the first to feel the pinch just because of the sheer volume of activity that occurs in the New York area. It's probably the busiest airspace in the world. And so I am expecting that that is going to continue for some time. And I think it's a direct reflection and result of staffing issues. They're down pretty dramatically in the number of air traffic controllers. It takes years to train someone to be an air traffic controller with the existing and current technology and with the, the principles under which the air traffic control system operates. So if it is a serious problem, it's going to take years to fix. My, and I probably live to eat these words, but my sense is that we're in a significantly better position because of the lack of proximity to other major airports in our area. And so the amount of airspace that is occupied and controlled is just not nearly as dense as is the case in the New York area, for example. Washington DC would be another very difficult space. And I would guess that they might be next on the list. I would say Chicago could be experiencing problems. Probably not so much LA or the coastal airports for the same reason. So I'll knock on the glass tabletop and just say, I think it is less likely to affect us, although it's a national airspace. And so if there is a plane in New York that is late getting off the ground headed for Salt Lake, it can get here, but maybe it's going to get here late. People are going to miss their connections because of that and so on and so forth. And so definitely this is a case where the hip bone is connected to the thigh bone. And so even though we may not have direct challenges here, if there is a storm in Minneapolis, it's going to affect us. If it's snowing in Atlanta, it's going to affect us. And so this is, it is a very big challenge. And I think a lot of people want to think it's technology. It's not really technology. It's people. And I think that is the bigger problem. And to be blunt, there isn't much that an airport can do to affect that. We've, we've got lots of room on the airfield, lots of capacity, so that's not really an issue. The new airport helps a little bit because it's easier to accept and to launch aircraft here now than it was, say, a decade ago. So from that perspective, we're in pretty good shape, but that's about this much of the, of the challenge. Thank you. Thank you.
Item number three, which is fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. This is the administration's overview. And we have with us. Greg. Hi. Thanks, Greg. Greg, what's your last name? I'm sorry. Okay. Clary? Clary. Greg Clary. Yeah. Oh, that's okay. Thanks, Greg Clary, for me, for taking us through it. Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Greg Clary. I'm our city budget director, here to provide a brief overview of the fiscal year 2026 mayor's recommended budget. Next slide, please. Based on our financial position as we began the budget process, along with the financial and larger economic unknowns we've all been encountering over the recent months, our direction and tone across the city was to focus on our contractual obligations, inflationary items, core services, our prior commitments, and keeping our budget flat when possible. We asked some departments to reallocate or repurpose existing funding when possible. We stressed that no new or additional positions would be welcomed. We wanted to, again, provide the framework of economic uncertainty going into the next fiscal year and take a little bit of a hedging approach, if you will. There was focus on carrying out our public safety plan initiatives. And we had the goal to reduce our structural deficit and the use of fund balance. In the end, we were able to avoid the use, excuse me, avoid the need for a property tax increase this year, although that will be likely going into fiscal year 27. Next slide, please. This slide should look familiar. This was presented last week. Andrew gave an update on our revenue outlook for next year. But I did want to quickly revisit this slide to just give you a sense of our general fund revenues as they are looking for next year. Next slide, please. The table here presents proposed increases seen in our public utilities. This is simply an estimate for some common types of customers. This will vary based on a number of factors. But as you can see, we're projecting about a $120 annual estimate in our public utilities. Next slide, please. Additionally, we see a proposed increase in our refuse program. This is about a 10% increase on an annual basis at about $41. The table here at the bottom presents our GO bond, or the second issuance, estimated at $35 million. And also the corresponding property tax impacts based on a given value of a property, whether that's a residential or a commercial property. Next slide. The table here presents our citywide expenditures totaling 1.86 billion. You will see that this is a decrease of about $121 million. That decrease is primarily due to a reduction in our capital expenditures taking place at the airport and in our public utilities departments. Next slide, please. There are a few changes to the organizational structure that are being proposed as part of the recommended budget that are worth highlighting. The engineering division, 37 FTEs are being proposed to be transferred from public services to CAN. That is a total budget of approximately $5.6 million. The arts council, shifting from economic development to community and neighborhoods. That is nine FTEs at about $1.3 million of budget. Part of the heart team, three full-time equivalents at about $325,000. And then the graffiti response team being transferred from public lands to public services. That is seven FTEs and about $770,000 worth of budget there. Next slide, please. And I did want to jump into the organizational changes ahead of presenting our general fund expense budget by departments. You will see some swing, some of which are negative. Those negatives are directly related to the transfer of a number of employees from one division to the next. And then you'll also see some moderate increases from one department to the other, and maybe some larger swings in certain departments who are taking on additional functions or programs or FTEs with the organizational updates. Next slide. Personnel expenses include the following as part of the mayor's recommended budget. The cost of living adjustments are proposed. We have a 5% to a 7.5% for our fire. Police at about 8.75%. AFSCME at 4%. And then a 4% adjustment as well for the nonrepresented groups. Our health insurance premium, we did see about a 7.1% increase. Our health savings account, that value will stay consistent with the current year, which is a $1,000 city contribution for single enrollments and 2,000 city contribution for those enrolled in a double or a family program. In our pension and our 401K, we see about a $750,000 increase in the general fund. All of this combined across the general fund is about $11 million increase from last year's budget related to our personnel expenses. The public safety plan. The public safety plan was an important consideration in building this year's budget. And specific items are highlighted here. This includes homeless services with a budget of $850,000. This is related to our downtown ambassadors and also our advantage services contract. Additional funding for our alternative response in our police department. Overnight security at East and West Side Park locations. This also includes the creation of the Clean City Team. This includes personnel costs and five FTEs, as well as some startup costs, some equipment costs and vehicle costs as well for this team. There is also $300,000 proposed for enhanced street lighting. Next slide. Some other increases that are seen across the general fund. We see some inflationary items throughout the departments totaling approximately 1.5 million. Some contractual obligations at about 810. New property maintenance in public lands at about $500,000. We see our Fifth Fifth Street maintenance at 300,000. Police Department overtime, our transportation dockless mobility program, and also some temporary personnel related to our impact fee program at $100,000 in the finance department. Next slide. This slide highlights some of the West Side focused investments. So this includes $680,000 in CIP funding to repair and rebuild the Rose Park Lane Trail. $124,000 to UTA for continued on-demand service. $400,000 to preserve and restore the Fisher Mansion to assist and prepare for an RFP. And then also some additional items that I noted prior in our public safety plan slide, such as enhanced street lighting and a North Temple Right of Way Services Team. Next slide. As part of the fiscal year 26 recommended budget, approximately $28 million from fund balance is being utilized. This is in comparison to $44 million that was used in fiscal year 25 and $33 million in '24. Next slide. And with the recommended budget, the city's projected general fund fund balance will sit right at 13%. The additional data points here show the fiscal year '24 ending fund balance and the current general fund fund balance following budget amendment five for the year.
That slide, that slide doesn't look very good.
I think it might have gotten schmushed.
Yeah. And yeah, I will note that this does not account for any additional realized at year end through additional revenue or unused funds returning to fund balance as part of the year-end process. Next slide. That's all. I am available for any questions, if anyone has questions immediately. And of course, we do have department presentations over the next couple of weeks, so we'll dive a little bit deeper with those.
Member Dugan.
Just confirmation, the 12.96 or 13% sets running our future in total fund balance. Correct?
Yeah. So yeah, the 13% is the general fund total fund balance.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Boy.
Economic development and the movement, just maybe a little quickly, and I know I need to dig in a little bit more in the next couple of weeks, but the arts council moving to, from economic development to CAN, it is 1.245, $1.2 million because of nine FTEs moving. But then when you see the economic development budget, it drops by 1.9 million from the previous budget. So I'm wondering if there is a little more explanation. I know that this is going to be discussed individually within the departments, but do you happen to know what that difference is? That's one. And then the second question relates to clarification on this, on slide, related to the West Side. In East Side Parks, overnight security, which is in your slide, is 515,000. And then in the, two slides later, it's 258,000. And I think it's maybe the West Side only. Is that what that, that difference is?
Yes. On the, on the parks, the West Side portion is specific to the West Side. The larger value is the East and West Side, the total. Correct? Yes. And then real quickly, on the Economic Development Department, you will see some additional reductions in our, in, there were some reductions in the Main Street Promenade Program and also the construction mitigation grants. So those are presented in the department section. So that combined with transferring some employees and some operating budget will treat that up, yeah.
Thank you.
So in follow-up to the construction mitigation, like reduction, I know that we've been trying to address those needs as they've come up, and we've done that through budget amendments. I guess I just ask the question whether it's something we can answer today or in the future, but just to help in understanding why we're projecting those needs to be lower related to kind of the future city planning needs.
Yeah, I think probably best suited when we get to the Economic Development Department's presentation, we can dive into that a little bit deeper. Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all the questions we have. Thank you so much, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to agenda item number four, which is the fiscal year 2025, '26 budget council staff overview. And we're going to have Jennifer Bruno joining us from this table. And then, yeah.
Anyone who feels like joining.
Anyone else wants to join.
Come on up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, the intention of this is, the administration does a great job going over the various technical aspects of the proposed budget, the percent changes of each department. So the intention of this presentation and the staff report is really to look at the budget from the legislative branch lens and from the lens of the policy choices you see or you hear from your constituents. So next slide, please. This is as much for the public as it is for you guys, since you've been, many of you have been through this several times. But the council's role in the budget process is to consider previously discussed policy goals or priorities as identified by elected officials, as those priorities can sometimes change depending on community needs changing. The extent to which the proposed budget addresses those community needs and service levels. Specifically, how decision made this year may create a budget impact in the future. So I think the administration discussed this in their overview, the, you know, decision this year not to do a property tax increase is a policy choice, and that means that it may be setting up a policy choice in a future year. The potential, we always try to identify any potential unintended consequences that may result from budget and policy decisions, and then how those decisions align with the role, the appropriate role of city government, whether there are duplications in levels of government and services provided by different levels of government, or the extent to which the city needs to step in if other levels of government are not providing levels of service. Next slide, please. So from a really high-level perspective, if, you know, you had two minutes in an elevator to talk about how the legislative branch maybe sees this budget, I think it's a very conservative, small-c conservative budget that focuses on just keeping current service levels maintained in every area, I think, except for public safety and the Clean City Team. That's really the notable expansion of service that constituents might notice. While it does use less fund balance than in recent years, it does use slightly more one-time money than in recent years. So we'll, I'll go over that in a later slide, but there are several kind of one-off accounts. Maybe we could call them couch cushions that were, you know, looked at to help balance the budget without a property tax increase. So we always, we like that, you don't want to leave money in your couch cushions, but it does, they are one-time in nature. And then really, the big story, I think, the other big story in this budget is inflation and how it impacts the city's budget on both the revenue side and the expense side. The expense side is because not only are contracts increasing, but we're, as a city, having to pay employees more and focus on employee benefits so the employees can keep pace with inflation, but then it also means that our expenses as a city increase. Next slide. We don't need to go through detail on all of these, but this is to just sort of recognize that there's no such thing as like a perfect budget answer. Every kind of budget decision has different sides to the coin, and not that they're good or bad, just it's important to kind of keep those in mind as you're making those decisions so that you understand the trade-offs essentially that are involved in each of those choices. So happy to talk through that more if you want, but we can go to the next slide. This is just a little bit more on one-time versus ongoing revenue. And the goal we typically have, which is to align one-time, align ongoing funds with ongoing needs and one-time needs with one-time funds. So we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the one-time revenue slides. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is a chart, pie chart showing the breakdown of our revenue sources. You'll see that property and sales tax are a little bit closer this year than they were last year, actually. And it's probably reflective of sales tax maybe cooling a little bit. I wanted to make the point that the city can't really control many of these revenue sources, so there are only, you know, a couple areas that we can control. We can control how much one-time money we use, how much fund balance we use. You can control property taxes, you can choose to raise them if you want to. And then you can set licenses and permits and fees at different levels, as long as they're cost justified, of course. But you can't control sales tax. So unless the state gives you authority to increase sales tax rates, you can't really control that. So that's just another thing to consider as you're putting together the budget and the administration had to consider in terms of how you structure that based on setting yourself up for kind of future, future years. Next slide, please. The intention of this chart was just to show kind of the flat revenue trends from last year to this year, and then also to illustrate just how bad it can get the last time we had a real downturn in the economy. It really was quite a shock to the general fund. I think based on Natalie Gockner's presentation earlier, maybe we're not, we're not anticipating that dramatic of a downturn, but I think it's always good to remember sort of how things happened in the past so that we can prepare ourselves for the future. Next slide, please. This one, I just wanted to break down, in preparing for a town hall recently, I wanted to break down all of the different entities that collect sales taxes because we've had several changes to sales tax in the last year from both the city and county. So the rate, the total sales tax rate in Salt Lake City as of July this year will be 8.7%, which is different than in previous years. And some of those portions of the rate are essentially spoken for. So you can see the capital city revitalization tax that the city enacted in 2024 is funds, are funds that will not go necessarily to the city, that will go to the downtown redevelopment. The same is true for some of the transportation option taxes that were enacted by the county, especially the one that was just most recently enacted. So anyway, there's, there's probably a whole presentation that we could do on sales tax, but just to give the public a little understanding of which entities collect what and, and to show that the majority of sales tax actually goes to the state, 4.85% goes to the state. So. Next slide, please. Some of the budget is put together based on economic conditions, right? So revenue projections that are fueled by things that are kind of naturally occurring in the environment, so franchise taxes, property taxes and new growth as development is occurring kind of because of the economic conditions and sales tax. Building permits I've shown as flat because they are kind of flattening out, which I think is its own kind of interesting indicator. And then there are revenues from policy choices, so if you could go to the next slide. And these are, these are as proposed in the mayor's budget, so not necessarily extend, like, for example, if you chose to increase property taxes, that would be a policy choice. So a policy choice example would be one-time revenue in this budget. The proposed budget for fiscal year '26 includes adjusting hours that parking meters will be charging, that will be charging for parking on street from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM and then on Saturdays. And so that's a policy choice that generates revenue to balance the budget. Another policy choice that generates revenue to balance the budget is an ordinance that the council en- the council enacted in 2014 that automatically applies the Consumer Price Index to all city fees. The council could choose, you know, every year, the council kind of evaluates whether or not it makes sense to keep that on. Since 2014, we have done that every year as per the ordinance, but you could make a policy choice not to do that. Obviously, it has a revenue impact if you don't do that. And then, public utility rates, that's a separate column, because it's not that the general fund gets those rates, but it is a policy choice for public utilities to make those rate changes. I'll kind of skip over these next two slides, because I think we've been over it, but the truth in taxation process is what holds our property tax revenue steady. And then the next slide, please, unless there's new growth. So if there's new growth, then we do get new property tax revenue. Next slide, please. This is all of the lists, this is a list of one-time revenue that is proposed in the fiscal year '26 budget. So you'll see that some of them are kind of, are funds that are sitting right now, not being used, but not necessarily available for future years. So, helpful to shake the couch cushions, of course. Some of them are being allocated to specific uses, so fund in the, in the transportation fund, for example, $300,000 is allocated specifically to pothole repair. Some dormant program funds in the housing and loan fund is being allocated to support youth and family programs over the summer, but just wanting to make sure, and that total is $46 million. Next slide. This is just a chart, I think the administration went over this, so we don't need to spend much time on it, kind of totaling up all of the rate and fee proposals. Next slide, please. And then this is just going through every department line item to call out where inflation really kind of affected the city's budget. So I think different line items may or may not totally count for inflation, but I counted things like hourly pay increases for workers, because that feels to me part of, you know, staying pace with the cost of doing business. So if you total all that up across city departments, you're looking at, you know, $5.8 million. Obviously, public services and public lands are hugely impacted by that. Next slide, please. Again, the administration went over this, but this is just some of those organizational adjustments, so I won't spend much time on that. Next slide, please. So a big area of interest of the council that I've heard is how are we maintaining our existing city asset, assets? So this is just a start of calling out in various departments where there are specific line items in the budget that really do help the city maintain current assets and kind of keep pace with the current list of things. If you go to the next slide, we went through the CIP log and tried to pull out all of the different projects in the proposed CIP log. Now, this does not include projects that were not funded, but these are all the projects that were funded that I think would fit in the category that the council has identified of investing in existing city facilities and existing city assets. So obviously, some of them are using impact fees, and some of them are using general fund dollars, some of them are using transportation dollars, so it's not to say that you could necessarily like pull money out of this CIP to balance the general fund budget or to hire police, but this is just to get an order of magnitude of, of what you're looking at, and that's over $20 million on that. The next slide, West Side Investment. I pulled out a couple of extra projects that were in the CIP log for recommended funding, and you're looking at just under $4 million in recommended West Side Investments between capital projects, transit, and, and public safety plan. The Rose Park Golf Course is an interesting one, because it's, it's technically in the golf fund, but it's funded with a transfer from the general fund. So the general fund has been paying every year for the last four years on that project, which has totaled about $2 million in investing in the, replacing the irrigation system at Rose Park Golf Course. Next slide. And so these are just some of the other areas, just sort of a high-level, other areas that have been a priority for council members in recent years to have a sense of what else is in the budget. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions that you guys might have. And thanks in advance for your patience as we work through all of the departments. You can stop sharing, Scott.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, Jennifer, you said the building permits is flat, and do we get those numbers fairly on a monthly basis, or are they like two-month lagging like our sales tax numbers?
I don't, I don't believe they're lagging like sales tax. Maybe Mary Beth could answer the frequency question.
Just about building permits.
Yeah. I think because we collect them, we would probably get them more frequently, like, we would know on a real-time basis what the trend was looking like.
Yeah, building permits, we get the money received when they request the building permit.
So it's pretty much automatic?
Automatic, correct.
So we've probably already seen these building permits go flat in the last few months? Is that true? And did we?
Yeah, they've slowed down.
And I can't remember when we had the last budget amendment, did we see building permits being at budget for this past fiscal, this current fiscal year?
Well, building permits and, building permits and licensing is rolled into one.
Oh, right.
And remember that licensing includes your transportation tax and includes airport parking. It's probably slightly above because of airport parking and transportation, I mean, excuse me, transient room tax.
Okay, so that, and it's really, I'm gonna go look at the big pie shot. It's not, it's a, well, it's 8%, license permits, that's 8% of our budget, but the building permits for this future years, is it, are we seeing it flat for this next year?
Somewhat flat, yes.
Okay.
Not, not a large increase.
Okay, all right. They're just curious. All right, thank you.
And I think we thought to flag that, especially because of the uncertainty as it relates to tariffs and interest rates, that I think those have a higher likelihood of impacting construction planning, and so it's possible that people will hold off on new building projects, at least until there's more certainty about what interest rates and cost of, like, steel and construction materials is.
Right, and that, then that would also just impact our sales tax.
Yes.
Because, same time.
Yeah.
And I know we've kept that relatively flat for this next year also.
Other questions? All right. So should we just adopt it, or is that what I'm hearing?
No.
No, I'm just kidding. Thanks. And, and I've said this several times in different meetings with several of you, but please feel free to send any questions our way. We're kind of collecting them all now, and it takes a village to go through all of this information, so, thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, that brings us to Item Number Five, which is our dinner break, and we're a little early for that. Do you wanna do that?
Do we know, do we know if the food's good? It's just, okay, so you could if you want to, if you wanted a break.
Okay, yeah, let's break a little bit early and come back at 5:30 instead of 5:35. Okay, thanks, everybody. Hear ye. All right. Is it your pen? Oh, here, sorry. I needed to borrow it for the gavel. Welcome back, everybody. We're at Agenda Item Number Six, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Budget, Fleet Fund. And with us for this item, we have Sylvia Richards, Jorge Camorro, and Nancy Bean, Fleet Division Director. Yay, welcome. Fleet Fund, woo! Fund, but both, and I am revved up for it. All right, let's hit the road.
This is the Fleet Fund Budget Review for Fiscal Year 2026. Fleet Fund is an internal service fund, and it resides in the Department of Public Services. Fleet is responsible for the purchase and maintenance of city-owned vehicles, and the monitoring of fuel, and the management of the city's vehicle pool. Fleet's proposed budget is $23.7 million, which is a decrease of 15% as compared to the last fiscal year, attributed in part to the mayor's request for flat budgets, and also due to the council considering fiscal year '26 fleet purchase budget in a fiscal year '25 budget amendment rather than the annual budget process to avoid potential impacts from federal tariffs. More recently, the Departments of Sustainability and Public Services provided the council with the Salt Lake City Fleet Electrical Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Plan, which identifies the future costs and specific details of the infrastructure needed to accomplish the city goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 80% by 2040 by electrifying the fleet. The council will hear more about that plan in the Public Utilities Budget Briefing. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Jorge and Nancy. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. With me today, we have Nancy Bean, Director of Fleet, and I believe online, we have Deputy Director Julie Kruston, just chiming in in case we have the need for additional information. But let me start our presentation. If we go to the next slide, we're keeping the presentation and the number of slides very concise, very, very, very short presentation. We're just gonna focus on what we're asking for fiscal year '26, which is $691,000 for our maintenance fund. This is in response to the increase on personnel costs, so call adjustments, utility fees, and admin fees. So this is just the cost of doing business, a little bit going up, and this is an ongoing request, so building on to last year's operational budget. Next slide, please. All right. As you may remember, we have also the replacement fund. In this bucket of money, we have general fund dollars that go towards the replacement of aging vehicles. As Sylvia mentioned a few minutes ago, we went ahead with a budget amendment to request what we traditionally receive from funding our future, $5.2 million, of which $4 million go to the replacement of public safety vehicles, and $1.2 million go to the replacement of streets equipment. So we have that already taken care of in the last budget amendment, and this presentation, I'm bringing $5 million of general fund funding for the replacement of vehicles. Next slide, please. This is a little bit of a breakdown of how we are spending the $5.2 million that I was talking about a minute ago in Budget Amendment Five. The replacement goes towards police, fire, and streets specifically. For the $5 million that we're asking in this annual budget, we have the breakdown there with vehicles going to police, fire, public services, public lands, and the Department of Can. Next slide, please. All right. But what does it do to our backlog in replacements? So as you can see in the presentation, the left chart tells you that there are 390 vehicles or pieces of equipment that are due for replacement today. That is a total value of $38 million.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Thank you. Director Tomoto, will you explain the one vehicle that 911 is gonna replace? What is that vehicle? Is it, yeah, what is it?
Yeah.
It's a scooter.
That's the director, yeah, 911 director. The 911 director has a vehicle?
So that, that vehicle is due for replacement this year.
All right, go ahead and keep going.
Yeah, that represents 38% of the total fleet inventory. Next slide, please. What do we need to do in order to get us out of this backlog hole? The three scenarios that are presented here, one with no investment at all, you will see that in less than seven years, we will need to replace the entirety of, of our fleet. The second scenario is, is the current, what's that?
I said, with car prices, woo!
Okay, so the second scenario is the current funding. You can see in fiscal year '26, there is an aggregate of $10.2 million for replacements. That is the, the blue line that you can see in the, in the chart. That keeps us pretty steady, but we are not improving that backlog. Now, the ideal scenario, we get fiscal year '27 and fiscal year '28, a larger investment in replacements of the amount of $21 million each year. If we were to, to continue in that plan by fiscal year '31, we will be at a manageable backlog way below 20%. Next slide, please. All right, so as a summary, in the general fund maintenance bucket, we're asking for $691,329, and in the replacement fund, an even number of $5 million. No FTEs are proposed in this budget. We remain at 49 full-time employees and one part-time employee at Fleet. Any questions you may have?
Councilmember Puyi, and then Dugan.
Thank you. I remember from last year's presentation that we were, because of the, the grading of the fleet, we were repairing them more often than we needed, you know, we added money to, as a short-term solution to contract repairs, but we also added money, if I remember right, to have more ability to repair vehicles faster. Can you remind me how did that worked out, and was that sufficient to keep the fleet sort of going? What did that do to, you know, the, the impact to the fleet? And did we create any FTEs through that process? And if so, are we just maintaining that right now? Is that, you know, so, yeah, lots of questions, sir. Thank you.
So the fiscal year before last, we added three FTEs to maintain, to help maintain the fleet. Our sublets and maintenance repairs are becoming much more expensive. We're looking at replacing transmissions and engines, and when a repair is that much, we sublet it out to try to keep up with the maintenance repairs. We have become a very reactive shop and, and not focused so much on the preventive maintenance, but we have older vehicles, 10, 15-year-old vehicles in the police department and all the departments that we're trying to fix, public lands, lawn mowers that are, we are unable to find parts for. So our maintenance repairs have gone up. We have a good system of FTEs, but we, we can't take the, the load to do the transmission major repairs in the shop, and so we're suffering a lot of downtime because of it.
Dugan, okay. Okay. And is that the end of your presentation? Okay, any other questions, council members? Oh, Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Yeah, with the, the fleet vehicles that are overdue for replacement, will they be sent to auction, in that being used to offset some of the expenses?
In, in the best-case scenario, they will be sent to auction, but a lot of them have no value left to them. So if, if it's less than 10 years, we might be able to get some money for them, but in a lot of these cases, we're just getting scrap. They have no engines or transmissions.
Interesting. This is a random question, and I just have to ask it, because my dad asked it of me. Do we trade the catalytic converter in? Do we trade the catalytic converter in?
Repeat the question, please.
We trade the catalytic converters in.
Do we trade them in? Yeah.
Do we remove the catalytic converter?
No. No, those go with cars to auction.
Really? Well, right, to auction, but the ones that are scrapped?
If they are scrapped, I'm still on, huh? No, I'm just laughing. Once they're scrapped, if they're scrapped, we would remove the catalytic converter. In some cases, we'll hold it over in case we need it for another vehicle instead of replacing it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Puy.
I mean, this is a conversation I had before, and I don't think I got clarity, deep clarity on, and I would love to entertain some conversations off, you know, offline, maybe a small group meetings about the value of leasing versus buying. I know that multiple cities now this year, and in the last few years are going, multiple agencies in the state are going from the model of buying to leasing. I know that the UPD has done that for years now and some other agencies I know of. So when I hear about, you know, the idea that it's better for us to own something than not owning, and we are mostly running these vehicles to the ground, right, by extending their life and keeping them going with repairs and incredible work that we do to keep these vehicles going. So I'm confused about the value of leasing versus buying and if we should change the model. I would love to have that conversation in depth at some point.
We will definitely look forward to a small group conversation on that to answer all your questions. I remember we submitted a quick evaluation of what are the pros and the cons very recently, so we can go over that with you. That should be no problem.
Yes, Councilmember Dugan.
Thanks for this one, one chart about the overdue backlog. And this is more like on the, just the vehicle side of the house. Back to Nancy's point about the maintenance side of the house, you know, there's a point where you'll need, you know, to make sure that we have enough vehicles on the road, additional either FTEs or leasing expenses. And so when does that, I see that the curve kind of hits next year, and after that, is that, we see that separation between the blue and the green line of, and, but also on the blue line, I would think that we would start to see the increase in maintenance costs that will drive the budget in the wrong direction or require a budget amendment for either additional people or additional funds to take care of the vehicles so we don't have anyone standing on the sideline. Does that curve start to get really steep? And I have to imagine so. And when do it, for the additional maintenance costs without the additional budget? So if you were to get a couple more million dollars, you know, in the middle of the year or the beginning of the year, how does that help the maintenance costs and the making sure that the availability of the fleet cars is kept proficient?
Let me see if I understood correctly the question. If we were to add additional funding for replacement, what would be the impact on maintenance costs?
Yeah, or vice versa, right? Without the additional, how's our maintenance budget so we don't see a budget amendment next year or in the middle of this fiscal year going, hey, we need, you know, another $40,000 because we can't take care of our cars?
So, yeah, I was just confirming that it would be a similar scenario as a couple years ago when we had to add additional funding for subletting because the repairs that are coming, the catastrophic repairs that are coming to us, we don't have the capacity. So yes, likely, if we don't, if we don't get ahead of the backlog, there will be a need to rebuild transmissions, rebuild engines that currently is happening. We don't have the capacity to keep that going. So I would prefer that we focus on the long-term benefit of replacing vehicles because it can get very expensive. And most importantly, it is not just whether or not we can do it in-house or subletting. We are leaving people without their equipment or vehicles to perform their functions, which is the most critical part.
Councilmember Petro.
Okay, I have nerdy questions. On page 55, there's an item that is labeled, "Remove FY 2025 Vehicles for New Positions One Time." Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, so last year, every new position that got funded, any, every FTE that came with a vehicle, it was funded in Fleet. So we have to remove that from becoming ongoing, right? It was a one-time cost to purchase those vehicles.
So you removed it from ongoing and?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We just take it so it's not.
I was just going to chime in. You'll notice that concept in a lot of the departments. So anytime there's one-time funding, it looks like a reduction in the next fiscal year, but really, it's just a way to reflect that it was one time.
After the explanation, it makes a lot more sense, but it was not super clear trying to decode it. And then on page 233, our fuel billings are going down by $1,603,293. Does that reflect our trans, like the movement to EV? I do not anticipate fuel costs going or staying down. How do we account for that decrease there?
EVs have a small portion of it, but we've also, in the, we've got hit in previous fiscal with a war, and we did not consider what was happening, and we raised our fuel prices to meet them. We have scaled back to what we're actually using and what the EIA recommends for fuel pricing, and this year kind of supports it, and we figured if there is an emergency, we, then we can deal with it there.
Does this number still represent, is there still a buffer there for you all?
There is. There's a small percentage of a buffer.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask one more then?
Sure.
So it appears from what I saw in the, in the ideal funding scenario, it seems like what we need is for '27, '28, and '29, an additional 10.2 million. And then it feels like we get pretty much back on track, like new growth by '30 should accommodate that increase. Are we investigating any capital grants that could represent that 30.6 million to accommodate that for the next couple of years?
We were towards electric. We were looking at some diesel, and the diesel ones, the government grants just aren't out there as much. Sustainability has put in for all kinds of electric vehicle grants, and a lot of those have, we didn't get the funding or approved, and they're starting to go away right now.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're at item number seven, which is a general obligation bond for parks, trails, and open space, first issuance update and second issuance funding request. And so for this item, we have Allison Rowland from the City Council Office, Tom Millar from Planning and Design, Planning and Design Division Director for Parks Department, Maria Scott, and Ben Ledkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't mean to leave Tom up here all alone. This is a briefing on one, well, two things. One is the update from the first tranche of the 2022 general obligation bond, and the second is basically a preview of the administration's request for the second tranche, which would be issued this year. The main question for the council is whether you support the three proposals in the transmittal, which are summarized in, because it's very complicated, a lot of stuff going on, they're summarized in these paper attachments I just passed out. So the three questions, or the three proposals in the transmittal are project costs and scopes, changes to bond-funded personnel funding, and the second tranche total of 34 million and change, almost 35 million. So the council would need to approve these items or agree to modify certain amounts before June 17th so that the Finance Department can prepare for the second tranche issuance this summer. So I will turn it over to Tom to talk more.
Thank you, Allison. Allison's staff report does in 10 pages what my transmittal tried to in 20, so please refer to her excellent staff report, and I'll try to fill in some additional blanks and answer as many questions as you have today. My name is Tom Millar. I'm the Planning and Design Division Director within the Public Lands Department, and we're going to do just what Allison said we're going to do today. The bond for parks, trails, and open spaces passed in 2022 with 71% of voters approving the issuance of bonds. Our last City Council work session update was nearly a year ago, and we're excited to share the progress that we've made with the existing funding, which is the first tranche, and then talk about the funding that we're requesting in the second tranche. And before we get really going, I just want to take a moment to say really what a blessing it is to work on improving the best social spaces that we have in our cities. It's complex, and it's, you know, a crash course in municipal finance for many, but it's really just so amazing to see those places improve, and doing so with the guidance of our community has been really awesome. Next slide, please. This, at a glance, is all of the projects in the first column that are funded by the bond, and then their districts, so in all of your districts, all seven districts. The third column is the amount that we requested per project in the first tranche. The fourth column is the amount that we are requesting per project in the second tranche, and then we have a remaining column because we aren't sure if that's going to be one big third and final tranche, or maybe a third and a fourth tranche. The details on many of these projects and their progress, again, are found in the transmittal and the staff report, but I wanted to highlight just a few really big wins, major accomplishments that I think are worth, that are worth repeating. So next slide, please. All right, next slide after that. This, you will find on the second to last page of the 2024 annual reports that I passed out during the dinner break. This is the department's annual report that we publish every year and have for many years. So this chart comes from that report, and it talks about the progress, or at least the current stage, that all of these projects in alphabetical order are in or were in at the end of 2024. Next slide. So these are the few projects and big wins that I wanted to highlight. With the Fleet Block Public Open Space, over the last year, we've been doing a lot with our citywide engagement team, as well as with Can and the mayor's office, delicate outreach and preparation for the demolition of the former Fleet facility on that block. The demolition, obviously, this spring that is still going on, and the cleanup of which will last just a couple more weeks. And then currently, as we are just a couple of weeks away from beginning our public outreach, public engagement campaign specifically for the public open space, that'll begin in June, we hope, with a final concept design after a couple of rounds of input by the end of this year, as well as potentially having an artist onboard and developers with community benefit agreements in place also by the end of the calendar year. Glendale Park Phase 1's ribbon cutting will be this fall, and our Phase 2 design is entering what we call schematic design, where we have finalized the concept, and we are going kind of full bore on developing the details and the construction feasibility of that. Currently under construction along the Jordan River is our Backman Community Open Space and Outdoor Classroom, which is just west of Backman Elementary School, right where 600 and 700 north across the river. It's such a cool project, and it'll be completely done this year, and all of the funding that was allocated to that project from the bond will be expended this year as well. In addition to that outdoor classroom and in community open space, we're also going to be realigning the Jordan River Parkway Trail so that the new sort of main line alignment of the trail is on the west side of the river, south of the new bridge, and then still on the east side of the river, north of the new bridge. The Liberty Park Playground, with $2 million from the bond and $2 million in Parks Impact Fees, is about a week away from having its permits issued. And then we are doing our pre-bid meeting here in about three weeks. We'll have contractors bid this summer, and then we hope to get started midsummer, or at least by the end of the summer. We're also working on a lot of community messaging with schools, after-school programs, so that the people who are regularly using the playground, obviously, as well as the general public, will know alternative locations that they can go to while that playground is under construction. Madsen Park in District 2 has received a generous donation so that the bond does not have to cover the costs of completely redoing the playground, and the bond funds can go towards the broader beautification, and that just means that we're able to do more with the same amount of money, and we'll be able to construct the playground this year and the rest of the park next year. And then lastly, Sunnyside Park, I think as all of you know, received an additional $4.2 million from the University of Utah, making that what was before a relatively small project into a much more impactful and beneficial project. We are finalizing our community engagement this month, and we'll have final concept design this summer that we then move forward into construction documents. Next slide. And then this shows more or less a preview of the progress that will be made on all of these projects and the stage or the phase in which these projects will find themselves by the end of this calendar year, so within the next seven months, moving one, two, sometimes four or five steps into the future. Next slide. Now I'll jump into what is in the request for the second tranche, which is a $34,986,400 request. It should be noted that both the first and second tranches added together would have an impact on the median property value of a primary residence of approximately $19 to $21 per year. What we told the voters in 2022, when we asked them if they would want to vote for the issuance of bonds or not, was that the maximum that their property tax would go up would be $54.80. So we're still well below half that amount, even with both of these tranches issued.
Can I pipe in just so that people understand kind of how that works? That's based on the time that elapses from when we do our initial calculations to prepare the information for the voter packet. If property values change significantly, obviously, you need a kind of a lower rate per dollar to generate the same amount to pay back the bond. So that's why you'll sometimes see those numbers fluctuate a little bit. It can also fluctuate in the other direction, so it's great when it doesn't.
Thank you. Next slide, please. At a glance, again, this is the same information from the slide a few previous for what is being requested and what makes up that almost $35 million. Next slide, please. You'll also note that Glendale Park, and this is entirely to fund the construction of Phase 2, which is in design right now, makes up about 2/3 of the entire second tranche's request. Next slide. $2.4 million for the Jordan River will fund additional construction document development, that's basically finishing design and getting ready for bidding and construction, as well as the construction of the first-phase high-profile projects along the Jordan River, which, in addition to the Backman Community Open Space and Outdoor Classroom, would include corridor-wide ecological irrigation, tree and safety improvements, as well as major and, major improvements at Cottonwood Park, Bend-in-the-River Park, and Modesto Park. Next slide. $3.6 Three point six five million for Allen Park is the remainder of the funding from the bond for the Allen Park project, and this funds what we've called Phase One of what is included in the Allen Park Adaptive Reuse and Management Plan, which we briefed you on, I believe it was October or November of last year. We actually did interviews today for the design consultants that will be doing that project, and in addition to the three point six five million from the bond, there's also considerable funding from Public Utilities' Stormwater Program, because many of the improvements in Phase One are making that stream channel a lot less steep and deep and more accessible, leading to less erosion, more ecological benefit, more access for people to not necessarily get down into the creek, but be able to use more of Allen Park, and for that to be a benefit to the park as well as the ecosystem. Next slide. Nine hundred thousand dollars is being requested for the Fleet Block public open space. Again, we'll have the final concept design for Fleet Block done by the end of the year, and then this will be the funding that we'll need to do remediation, potentially other infrastructure in preparation for construction of the public open space, as well as completing all of the design for the public open space, leaving about four point five million dollars in a third or future tranches for the construction permitting and other soft costs of the public open space at the Fleet Block. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to note two more details that are in the staff report and in the transmittal, one related to personnel costs. The one that's highlighted is the cost to pay for the salaries, benefits, and ongoing personnel costs of the three FTEs that are dedicated to and don't work on anything other than bond-funded projects. We were pretty conservative in our estimates with the first tranche and made sure that we didn't run out of money for our staff. That was a very important thing for us. So we do have some left over that goes beyond those first three fiscal years of the bond that we imagined in that first tranche. So the first tranche funding will still be able to fund, let's see, fiscal year twenty-seven? And then, sorry, part of, yeah, part of twenty-seven, and then this request in the second tranche will fund the rest of twenty-seven and all of twenty-eight. And then obviously, the third tranche would fund the rest. The change that we've requested is to reclassify one of the positions within public lands, and two of those three positions are in public lands, from an associate landscape architect position, which is level twenty-nine or grade twenty-nine, to a senior landscape architect position for a couple of reasons. One reason, the projects are getting to the point where our original approach to managing those projects with public lands planners is no longer feasible, in that planners are good at planning, and they're good at community engagement and concept design, and we needed somebody who could do detailed design, construction management. The person that we have hired is extremely qualified and would be qualified for a senior landscape architect position if that were the position that we had open. In addition, since the first tranche, and since the staffing plan was initially developed, the changes in public lands, as well as in engineering, to move all of the landscape architects over to public lands means that now we are in need of landscape architects more than we were in 2022 and 2023, when we initially put that plan together. And then, next slide, please. This is kind of the last change or funding request that I'd like to highlight in the second tranche, and that is seventy-five thousand dollars of this four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars would go to a part-time staff person in the Arts Council to lead the, or to manage the contracts for all of the public art commissions in bond-funded project sites, which includes a unifying public art piece in all of these sites, as well as public art in four, further public art in four of those sites. Next slide. So as Allison mentioned at the beginning, our requests are threefold, that eventually we will need the council to approve the project costs and scopes, which are found on page eight of the transmittal, changes to those bond-funded personnel, as well as the addition of a part-time position in the Arts Council, and then the total amount that's being requested in the second tranche, so that the Finance Department, Treasurer's Office can prepare that Bond Parameters Resolution transmittal for you. And then the next slide is my last. These are some tentative timelines, milestones over the next few months. We would hope that with the council's adoption of next fiscal year's budget, that it would include an authorization for funding the second tranche of the bond. And then the Treasurer's Office anticipates that they will need a bond transaction briefing on July first and request that the council adopt a Bond Parameters Resolution on July eighth. That would allow the bond closing to occur in October ninth, which aligns pretty well with our bidding schedule. We like to bid projects out for construction in the late fall, early winter, to get the best prices for construction next year. Thank you.
Council members, questions? Councilmember Young.
Okay, so this is going to be a difficult series of questions, but bear with me.
No problem.
Okay. So I have been asked quite a bit about projects that are happening in District Seven, but I think that this can be applied more holistically. So if I'm looking at Slide Six, which is the where we were at the end of 2024, and then where we hope to be by the end of 2025, I think the question that I would like help answering is if the bond was approved in 2022, and we only made it to the green dot in the two years to 2024, how is there a reasonable expectation that we're going to be to the pink dots by 2025?
It's an excellent question. I'll answer it in a couple of ways. One, the bond was voted on by voters in November of 2022. However, the funding did not become available from the first tranche, did not become available until October of 2023. Only once that funding was available were we able to then issue RFPs, RFQs, be able to contract with our, whether it be a consultant or a construction contractor. And so the green dots, I guess the amount of time between when the funding became available and when those green dots were put in place was about fourteen months. So we feel like it was a pretty big leap forward, going from not started on almost all of those to where the green dots were in a matter of about fourteen months. We also know that the difference between the green and the pink dots is about the same amount of time, about twelve months, and I have zero qualms about getting to those pink dots by the end of the year, by the end of this year.
Okay. And I think that that's helpful. I think my concern is that we're going to try and make that jump to the pink dots, and we're going to be adding in additional projects from the new tranches.
That's a great point. So the way that we have organized this bond is a little bit different than we organized, we, the city, organized the Streets Reconstruction Bond in 2018. That reconstruction bond anticipated that basically all of the projects in, like, construction year 2021 would be in one tranche, and then all of the projects in construction year 2022 would be in that second one, and then so on and so forth. The way that we've structured this one is that we've asked for funding for particular phases of almost every project in the first tranche, and then we're asking basically just for funding for the next phase or two of all of those projects in the second tranche. So it does, it does mean that we have two open tranches, and yet there may not be sort of the full construction budget issued on some of these. But what we didn't want to do, especially because we were starting many of these projects from scratch, was say, okay, we need all of the money for the entire project from start to finish all at once, and then have a lot of that debt be on the taxpayers for three, four, or five years. So it was, I would say, a conservative approach to fund basically everything but construction for most of those projects in the first tranche, and then now that we know, now that we've been through that fourteen months of developing those projects, now we have a very good sense of where we'll be in twelve months and all of the funding that we need for the next three to five years.
Okay. So I'm wondering if there's an opportunity in follow-up related to that chart with the pink and the green. I think something that would help me, especially in the conversations with residents, would be to somewhere on this, maybe like by boxing out certain areas, to have a better sense of where we expected to be at the end of 2025 versus where we are, or for 2024, if that makes sense. And so, like, to your point, if we were saying really our goal with the first tranche was only related to having a concept design, and look, we've met that target, I think that that visualization would be helpful, because I think, to reflect the other side of it, so I think the reality of what I hear from my residents is they're like, you know, I voted for these improvements, like, way back when, you know, and we haven't seen anything, you know, transpire in terms of actual changes to the landscape. Now, that may be part of the city's plan in terms of saying, like, you're right, like, we weren't expecting to have that until this point, but I think that that messaging gets difficult for our residents, because they look at it through the lens of, I voted for it, and I expect to see something.
Absolutely.
And so if we could just have some clarity in that space, I think that would be positive. And then I have one more piece. Can I keep going?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm rolling. Okay. So I think the other part that is challenging, and I may be the only council member with this challenge, but open it to the rest as well, is that we're also looking at creating more comprehensive buckets to try and reduce overall costs in terms of some of these efforts. So like, an easy example I can give is related to a council vote in 2023 to be able to have additional safety lighting and restrooms, and funds dedicated to those solutions for Fairmont Park. Now, does it make sense from a fiscal standpoint to say, let's do public engagement twice on the same park when we're doing this? No, it certainly doesn't, and I am a huge supporter in reducing those processes and combining when possible. The drawback of that is, is that that money is effectively then held hostage, and it's not able to meet the needs of the safety lighting and restrooms that was part of that intent until potentially, according to the handout, like, 2027. And that feels like a pretty big disconnect related to what could be, like, some high-priority issues. So I don't know if there's opportunities to be able to, you know, still get those efficiencies, but maybe take some quicker steps related to some of those separate funding components that we're bucketing in together, just to be able to make sure that we're addressing some of those issues, because to me, it all compounds back to the vision of the budget, which is really trying to get moving on that public safety plan, and noting that we have funds dedicated to some of our public lands that I think do support that vision and actualization of public safety. I would love to know if there were opportunities and solutions to put those into action, as opposed to waiting for the comprehensive plan and project to be ready to go.
Okay. Yeah, I can get back to you on that. I'll talk to Kira, our project manager on Fairmont, because I do know there's four funding sources for Fairmont, and they have different timelines, and you're right, that was our proposed approach, is engage the community once, design once, build once, so that we're not kind of stretching it out over multiple years and having a lot more impacts than we'd like to. But I'll talk to her about what we can do on kind of the quick win side, or at least showing some progress on what people voted for and what funding is currently available.
And at least to be clear on my priority in that space, it's not a quick win in terms of, man, I'd love to see the basketball court, like, come to fruition. To me, that priority truly is the safety component. And just noting that, like I said, that's been such a big focus of our city in looking at the budget. If there are those opportunities for the quick wins related to safety in our public lands, I would be appreciative to get those underway.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Thanks, great to see you. My question was in relation to, I'm reading there might be a potential third tranche that comes out of the GeoBond. Could you walk me through what that possibility is and which of these projects? I'm looking at the remaining funding amount, and I want to just, I would love to know if that's accurate, if those are going to be funding sources we may need to consider in the third tranche.
Would you like me to kind of preview the kind of scope of what would be in the third tranche?
Yeah.
Is that, am I understanding that question correctly?
It would be helpful, or, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, where Fairmont Park, for example, would have, it looks like remaining funding that would need to be allotted.
Yes. Currently, the funding for Fairmont Construction is in the third tranche. Yeah. And so if the, if we can bring up the PowerPoint again and go to just that first slide after second tranche request, that would be great. Thank you. And I can just kind of walk you through these. So you see that most of them, most of the projects do not have any requests in the third tranche, and that's because construction will be well underway by the time we get to that point. I talked about Fairmont. Fleet Block, again, because we won't have final construction documents until the end of 2026, it doesn't behoove us to issue a bunch of debt and then not be able to spend it for at least eighteen months. So we've saved the construction budget for Fleet Block until then. The Jordan River Corridor, again, we're trying to capitalize on those quick wins and those kind of Phase One improvements from the Emerald Ribbon Action Plan, but we know that there are many other improvements that need to be made along the Jordan River Corridor. We simply don't want seven projects going on at the exact same time and the whole corridor to be shut down. So knowing that we wanted the first highest priority projects to go in the second tranche, then all of the remaining projects would go in the third tranche. And then lastly, the Peace Labyrinth is that space just north of Seventeen Hundred South on the east side of the river. The reason why we pushed this one to the third tranche, even though it's one of those reimagined neighborhood parks, trails, and open space funded projects, is because the Public Utilities Department may have plans and budget to remove their lift station at that location and do a project similar to what they did and we did collaboratively at the Cornell Wetlands Project just south of Tenth North. They may not have that funding for a little while, and so that's why we pushed that one until the third tranche as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Puy.
Mr. Chair, so I think that many of us share some questions, or maybe have quite a bit of questions about the status of the projects, how we communicate with our neighbors about the status of the projects, the delay or the changes on priorities for multiple reasons, and I can think of like four or five questions I have, you know, and I feel like we could drag this too long and not give you the opportunity to research a comprehensive answer instead of giving them to you right now. So I, if we are okay with this and create maybe a list of questions to you and your department to respond to, and, you know, I have questions about the Arts Council part-time position and how we're going to make that position actually work and accomplish goals, considering the, you know, the history of the department, and, you know, certainly about the issues of delays and not, and, you know, coming back to online with some of these projects and changing them. So if that's okay with, certainly I could start with some questions. I think many of us may have some to add. Will that be okay with you if we can consolidate and send those to you?
Yes, I also have a series of questions about Warm Springs, so, yeah, I think that probably is the better way to use our time. So does anybody else have anything, any burning questions they want to ask right now before we, okay. So we will...
Can I ask real quick? Is there a distinction? Is there a distinction in the projects as to what is performed in-house with our staff versus, I'm like, I've seen the construction crews out at Glendale, that's clearly a construction site in a construction project. We are not having our seasonal workers out there laying concrete.
That's correct.
But, and we don't have to do this now, but I would be interested in knowing how this is a division of labor for us as well. This one seems like the largest tranche, and so I just worry about capacity and our ability to stay on top of things. So if I could understand that division a little more clearly.
Yeah. I can answer it kind of in two parts. To the question of, and correct me if this isn't your question, how much of the design work or the engagement work do we do in-house?
Or any, any of the work?
Yeah. The construction, we do not do in-house. There are some projects along the Jordan River that are recommended in the Emerald Ribbon Action Plan that could be done by our Trails and Natural Lands team as it relates to restoration or irrigation or tree trimming. But many of the projects that involve big vehicles, moving earth, building walls, stuff like that, we leave to contractors. We get better prices than employing a very large workforce and then firing them all once all the construction projects are over. As far as design and engagement goes, I would say the majority of our community engagement on these projects specifically has been done in-house by both the project managers as well as our communications and engagement team. Design, I would say it's kind of a mixed bag until we get to concept, until we're done with concept design. Once we move beyond concept design, it's a pretty technical, time-consuming effort that can take design consulting firms, three or four people just working 40 hours a week each, and we don't have that kind of capacity. And so we have one project manager managing those consultants and they do the design for us, usually after we get past concept design.
So as we're looking on that chart where the green and the, or pink dots are, kind of the closer to the left is the more capacity draining for our in-house resources.
That's true.
And then closer to the right.
And it's also, those are also the steps that are the least expensive steps and why we haven't seen as quick of a, I don't know what we want to call it, spend-down, I guess, of the first tranche, because they are very time-consuming but very cheap phases. And then right now, we move into the fast, expensive phases.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Let's see. We are at the final item on our agenda tonight, other than written briefings and announcements. So that is the Council Policy Manual Communication Budget Discussion Follow-Up. Woo! And we've got Jennifer Bruno here and Lahua Weaver there. And, yeah. Let's take us through it.
Thank you. On your, at your places, I passed out an updated outline that we could move through. Based on the briefing in April, staff was asked to just prepare an updated version of the policy to anticipate all of the current uses that council members have been using the communication budgets for. The way that we did that is, in your packet and in this new thing, is an updated version of the policy. We did not put in all of the uses yet into the draft policy language because in several of the follow-up conversations, it seemed like it would be helpful to have some straw polls that we went through for council members to say, are these things you want council members to be able to use, communication budget funds for? And if so, should there be a limit to that, either by a dollar amount or a number of times per year or something of that nature? And then also, should those, should those communication funds be available to outside requests? And if so, should there be a limit for those as well? So we tried to, just the straw poll sheet, and there's a new one in this little stapled packet at your places that's hopefully a little easier to read. And if we could do a couple of things and then get to that straw poll chart, that would be really helpful so that staff knows we have your full direction. So with that, we had a few conversations and emails exchanged with the Attorney's Office to just make sure that we were citing the right sections of state code that govern how communication budgets and funds are used and whether there are any limits to how those, how the funds can be made available, what types of things they can be used for. And there are a couple of compliance bases that we need to tag, if you will. One of them is to make sure that the purpose and benefit of the funds is clearly stated. That makes sure that it complies with State Code Section 1082, which is something council members have dealt with in the past, what we call public benefits analysis. And so it's just making sure that when we're stating how the funds will be used, the purpose of the funds and the benefit of the funds, and the appropriate need of the funds to achieve those goals is all established. And so, and then the second part of state code is that it complies with the Fiscal Procedures Act, meaning that the intended use of the funds is stated clearly, that we have been transparent so that people know that that is their opportunity to make comment or raise questions about the intended use of the funds. And then that all of those things are clearly outlined in council policy and that that is our best document to make it clear to the public how the funds will be used and that they tag the 1082 base and the Fiscal Procedures Act base, and then that we're following that. So, and I invite Mark Cottrell, if you have anything to add, to please jump in.
No, I don't have anything further to add.
Trying to summarize.
We're here to answer any questions, and I can go down there if it's easier.
Okay. Maybe if we have questions?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that those are the kind of, in the old policy and in the newly drafted policy, those are the compliance issues that we're trying to make sure we've caught and outlined well. And that anything outside of those uses that we, that you all adopt in the final policy, if a council member were to come up with an idea for some type of use that is not outlined in the policy, then under the policy, it would not be allowed, funds would not be allowed to be used in that way. But staff can work with the council and the, and the council member who's bringing the request up for us to come up with a different type of process, like budget amendment or whatever it might be, so that the Fiscal Procedures Act base, again, is tagged. So with that, if I could just kind of walk through the draft policy language really fast, and that's the second paper in the stapled packet that you have, and this was, the version of this is what was in your packet, and then anything that's in the striking bold version here on this hard copy is just what we've changed since that packet version. So I wanted to just point out that Section A really goes through what those benefits are to the council member having access to a communications fund. Section B lists our best attempt at putting words to why, what the purposes of the funds and if there are any limitations, why they would need to be there. Of specific note, we took out item number four because there was some confusion in earlier versions about whether the city council could use communication funds as an outright donation. And in our conversations with the city attorney's office, it seems like as long as those initial bases are tagged that we went through, that those donations are fine, as long as the council is clear about them and they're included in the policy language. Number six covers what I said before, that if there is a use of funds proposed that is not included in this policy language, then it is not allowed. But if a council member does make that request, that it could be brought to the full council, kind of similar to what the art project in District 4 has been going through with the budget amendment discussions and final approval of the full body. Section C will be where we just clarify what budget is available. And then in item two, C2, we have highlighted, because once you all take the straw polls that we'll get to as quickly as we can, we will, staff will go through and update the language in the policy so that all of those uses are clearly outlined. And there's, we're trying to just minimize confusion on that. And then D is, I don't actually think much of this changed from the original policy that council members may be familiar with in terms of what the, that the district funds will be used for those, the types of uses outlined here. If it's a citywide event or involving more than one district, that there could be a conversation about either splitting the cost of the mailer or the event or the office paying for it if the council determines that that would be appropriate, that your liaisons track those expenses throughout the year, and that there is a carryover mechanism. And that's just all outlined there at the end of the policy. And if council members have edits, I would welcome getting those from you individually or we can, so that we can take the briefing time and get to the straw polls, if that's okay with the chair.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, Councilmember Young.
Because it may be a policy question that you guys don't agree with. I'm just wondering about the opportunity under D2 to maybe add a letter E related to council members who come in off-cycle. Not that that's happened to some of us, but just in terms of what the policy is there, since these states refer to like the traditional.
That's a great idea. And in practice, what we've done is for council members coming in off-cycle is to give them a full year's budget access because, so that they are not limited by what their predecessor chose to spend the funds on. And then it just expires at the end of the year with the carryover provision. So I can put words to that and add that here if that works.
Yeah. And then I think the only other question I had was just related, and maybe it's in here, I just didn't see it. Do we have anything that provides guidance related to timing associated with the election process in terms, like I know we do for other communications efforts? Like where we, yeah.
So it's covered in a separate section of your Council Policy Manual, and so we could make a reference to it.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, if everybody's ready, I'll unleash the straw polls.
Hooray.
Hooray. Okay. We have this divided into three categories. One is communication efforts. The second one is events and gatherings. And the third one is sponsorship. And in addition to just getting council direction on whether these are appropriate uses for council members and for outside requests, obviously, we would take from council members if there are any items that we've missed that you would like to have added. The first one under communication efforts is newsletters. We include, this predominantly includes the design, printing, and mailing expenses for hard copy newsletters that arrive in homes or to businesses, so they're printed and mailed. Thank you. And I can say more, Council Chair.
Oh.
Yeah. So the first one, the first part of this is whether council members can use the funds for this purpose, and then we'll do for outside requests.
Okay. That's unanimous.
And do you want, if it's, sorry.
That's okay.
If it's okay, I'll also ask if there, if you want a limit. And some of these, I think the answer is apparent, but it's just helpful for staff to go through each one and ask the same questions.
I think if it's something we generate in-house, I'm against limits. If it's something that, for any of these categories, that's generated externally, I'd like something like if it's more than 20% of the total budget or something like that, and make it real simple.
Yeah, I think ultimately, if, with the premise that it, that it highlights our city, our city government, you know, and, you know, the functions that we have in front of us and that, you know, the opportunities for feedback, I have no reason to personally, you know, put a limit into this first section of communication efforts, because we're talking about communicating and I have no issue with any of those personally. So I, no, yeah, with this, you know, I don't know what is an external communication effort.
So I've had, I've had a community council ask me to do a mailing for them to promote when they were trying to restart their community council. And so that would be an example of, you know, an external organization asking me to use my communications budget for them.
I will say that internally, I have no issue with, with no limits. Externally, maybe we want to discuss.
I agree. Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Oh, I was just gonna remind us all that the population of every district is different and the ability to reach them is going to look different. For example, downtown, a lot of the residents are renters, it's difficult to find their accurate addresses. I've sent mailings before to specific areas and had bounce backs. And so I just, I'm against putting a limit in this particular section, but I just wanted to say that I'm, yeah, I'm more interested in the validity of communication than the actual value of cost.
So it seems like we are in agreement about no limit there. What about the external communication from, you know, someone supporting?
An outside org asking for access to your comms budget for either a city-adjacent function, you know?
Yeah. Sarah, I know you had your hand up, so you can go.
I'm just wondering if maybe we could straw poll, like order of operations, if we could straw poll the council items first and then get to community second, just because I think it's a different set of constraints and concerns.
Yeah.
So operate all on the left-hand side first and go straight through.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just gonna ask, does anybody have any objection to everything that's listed in the communications efforts section?
Yeah.
What do you have an objection to?
Promotional.
Okay.
Material.
What, what do you?
And vote on the other ones.
That's a personal thing.
Okay, let's take that out.
I don't think we do any swag.
Everything other than promotional material, is everybody okay with newsletters, postcards, mass mailings, flyers, printing of information materials, and advertising?
Yeah.
Great. That's unanimous. Okay.
The limit or with no limit?
Now, we're gonna talk about limits and whether we should have, on those items that I just said, does anybody think that those should be limited for council member use?
Those require such staff intervention that it's so, like, touched by the city. I don't, we're not gonna get silly stuff through.
So if those should be unlimited, again, everything but promotional, and it's for the council member, raise your, or show your feelings.
And just for clarity's sake, so that the limit is your budget.
Your budget. Whatever is left.
Yes, yes, yes.
You have to, you have to.
For the record, for people listening at home.
Yes, you have to manage your budget in this case.
Okay, now let's talk about if it's an external.
Wait, promotional.
Oh, you want to do promotional first? Okay. Now let's talk about promotional. Dan, explain to me more what you mean.
I'm just saying, I'm a, I'm a personal side, I'm just totally against cheap stuff, swag, going out.
Okay.
So I wouldn't even think we should have it, but if you guys want to spend it, it's your own budget.
So you want a lower limit, since you don't want cheap stuff. You have to spend at least.
I'm just not, I'm not into it, so.
Tricky.
You could give out a fine.
But so, but again, that's what I say, that's just personal. I don't have, you guys can give it, I think it's a waste of time.
Okay, but do you, do you think that it should be limited, like council, should it be limited?
If you want to spend all your stuff on little widgets, go for it.
He just wants to vote against.
You did.
I did.
Made murka.
Okay, so, but you, okay, but the question isn't like.
Oh, that's cute.
The question isn't like, are you going to do this personally? Oh, okay. So do you want to put a limit on that?
No.
Okay. Okay. So I'm actually just gonna add that into the votes that we just made, and who is okay with just adding that into everything we, excellent. And Dan's, no. Okay, we're, it's still happening. Okay, now let's talk about external. So an organization is asking, that it isn't, something other than the council member is asking for funding for their own newsletter, postcards, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Bringing in promotional materials, yes, advertising.
Do we want to?
Has anyone had any experience in this sort of thing? The only thing I've ever experienced is a community council. Have you had experience from other entities?
No. But I, I, yeah, I've had community councils come to me multiple times asking.
I think we've had individual residents ask before too. Like if they had something they wanted to either include in your newsletters or have submitted that could be mailed with your newsletter. or have submitted that could be mailed with your newsletter or something like that. We've had individual requests over the years.
I, you wanna, I just struggle with this because it's, the intent of this funding is for us to communicate with, with our neighbors. But I also understand that a community organization might want to, you know, share something. But this is where we have the, the opportunity to create a mailer that includes the information for the event or for the service or, you know, I, so ultimately, potentially, we could just do it internally, right? Like we, we could just create a mailer that is from the city council and city council member talking about multiple things, including the event that the community council is, you know, they're seeking, I, I share in my newsletter quite a bit about vacancies, right, and, and community councils. And I send some mailers to my neighbors telling them to reach out to the community councils they belong to, you know, see if there are opportunities for volunteering, right? Like, so I include the information they are seeking within my mailers in some cases. But I, this is a communication funding for us and for the city council. So I struggle with giving that money away.
It also creates an inherent inequity. The three of us share one, so there are three people possible for that. Whereas Popular Grove only gets you, Sugar House only gets you, Avenue, right? Like, I mean, it creates an inherent inequity for access to resources.
Councilmember Young.
I disagree. So, and my disagree is more specific to the fact that I do have a single one. And so in many ways, it does not make sense for me to replicate when the reach of the community council might be greater, and that's a cheaper mechanism by which to distribute the messaging. And so, like, I'll be honest, they have never asked me for a single one of these items. But if they did, like, to me, people are more likely to be like, Sugar House Community Council, and like, open it up to be like, what is this? Then they would necessarily leave something that was branded with, with city council. And I understand that that, that puts me probably in the, like, cheese stands alone here. But I do, I do at least think, you know, that having that opportunity to be able to say like, yes, I will help you make flyers for Sugar House Rocks, like, which is an open community event that helps sponsor the small businesses in the district, that that's a good use of community communication efforts. And actually, wait for it, has an economic benefit because then we're generating local business and they need less of the construction mitigation funds. Boom.
Well, but, but you're talking about how effective the mailer will be. And I'm sure I, I don't discuss, I don't argue that. I think the mailer might be more effective. But is that the, the correct role of this funding from the council? The community councils have opportunities to get funding through the administration and applying to those. And your community council is one of those that is incredible, community council is very active. You were lucky that, you know, they were now asking, maybe they are going to now that they hear this. But I am not saying that their reach and their, their dollar will go longer. I'm saying, is this an appropriate place? Because then we create potentially some inequities that I'm not, not sure that there are ideal for us. Ultimately, that's a discussion that I just wanted to like, leave it out there.
And I would say yes, because if my goal is to communicate with as many residents as possible related to an issue that I think is important here at the city as a council member, I would say that that mechanism, yes, makes sense.
If the issue that they're communicating is something that relates to something that we're doing here or improve something in the city, right?
Yes, but I would say that that's where the council member has the discretion to say, yes, I would support that, or no, I wouldn't. You know, in terms of being able to make a decision about what types of communicate, you know? If obviously, they were like, you know, I would like to put out a newsletter that's, you know, speaking out against bike lanes in the city. I'd be like, we are not gonna be funding that with council dollars, you know?
What if it's more nuanced than that? What if it's the difference between 150 feet and 186 feet of height?
I mean, so, but I think that would again be the council member's discretion about what they would be willing to approve and what they wouldn't, in terms of the content.
It puts a lot of onus, especially on people, on people like, who have more than one and who do not have as well organized. And I don't get a lot of consumer-based economic development in my area, so I don't get to drive like you do. But like, I've found, you know, Rose Park Community Council going, do you want to come table? And asking almost like, do you want to buy into this project with us? And then there was another entity that was like, I need $750 for me because I need to do this mailer. And should I say no to that person? I was going to face online lynching, you know? And so it does put a lot of pressure to draw a line. I almost, it's, it feels very cowardly to say, but it's like, it would almost be nice if there were a line drawn for me and I just be, sorry, I can't, you know?
Yeah, and I guess I just look at it through the lens of if, you know, we're trying to get, you know, outreach, communication, and engagement, and that they have, you know, an enhanced reach and mechanism with which to do so, would we limit that? Or limit any council member's ability to activate that type of network related to a core issue?
I think that accomplishes, I think that we still could potentially do it in coordination with, let's say, the community council. It could be a mailer from the city council and the community council. It could have a messaging that is coordinated, and it still could be accomplishing both goals. But we're not necessarily giving them money to do it. By the way, the city also benefits from nonprofit postage pricing that is not easy to access outside government entities. So arguably, the cost of postage, even for us, is cheaper than for an organization that is outside that don't have that tax status. But I think that, I, I understand what you're saying, and I want to figure out a way that protects us from, from misuse, I guess, you know? But acknowledging that your point is very valid, and I think that leveraging these connections enhances and improves the communication. So I, I'm, I'm willing to find some consensus there.
And I think I also wonder about it through the lens of like, and forgive my analogy, but like, you know when you buy yearbook ads? And you're like, you can have a quarter page, you can have a half a page, like, you know, or something like that? And that it's like, if there was value to saying, you know, to a council member, like, you know, hey, yeah, I do, I want a quarter, quarter page of something you're sending out, and I just want to be able to, like I said, get a message there. You know, I just wonder about if this policy would then limit that exclusively.
So that's what I do. I, I have like a monthly piece in my Greater Avenues newsletter that, you know, is, is, it's a big part of my budget, but it's a fraction of what it would cost me to send a mailer to every resident in the Greater Avenues every month. So in that sense, like, and same, you know, we do Westview. And so I feel like that is okay. I think it's different when another community council has asked me, we're gonna have like, you know, a community Christmas party. We have these printed things, we can afford to print them, we can't afford to mail them. Can you pay for the mail, the postage? And I said okay to that one because I was gonna be at the party, and so I had them put it on there, that, like, that's one of the things that you could do is talk to your council member. So I feel like maybe if we're gonna put limits on it, if, if it doesn't have the council member in it or a message about the council member, I'd be in favor of a limit. If it's, if it's buying, you know, basically access on a media that already exists, then I think we should let the council member have the discretion.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay, so I think we'll need to work on the wording of that, but, yeah. So if it doesn't have the council member, you know, if, if it's not ad space and it doesn't mention the council member, do we want to put a limit on that?
If it doesn't mention?
Yeah, it's just, it's like, okay, let's say. Yeah, or let's say, okay, here's another one that, that they've asked us before is the, the like corrugated lawn signs that are for the community council's monthly meetings. I've gotten requests to print those, and I said no, because it's just, it doesn't say anything about me. It's just them saying, come to our meeting. And yes, I usually am at those meetings, but it, it, it doesn't say that on the sign. So that I could see putting a limit on or saying no to. What do you, do you want to say, we could do like a 10%?
I want to say no, like, I don't want to put a limit on it, I just want to say no. It has to be a direct alignment with the city initiative.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we want to say, so did you, does that make sense, that distinction? Okay.
So maybe this, I, I, so if we don't put any limits, which I'm okay, I, I would like to tweak the language on A B two, A. So that, that's fun. Which is the Purpose and Limitations and Standards section, where it talks about funds for the, from the communications and a reach budget must serve a valid public purpose. And A talks about sharing information about the city. I mean, anybody could say that anything is about the city, right? And, I mean, you know, literally anything is about the city. So I wanted to just tweak that, that government to include its government and.
And specifically council funds.
Council.
Yeah.
And maybe encourage community engagement with the city government. Because ultimately, that's what we're trying to sort of, but, you know, but those are different goals, so they're not necessarily all of them required, but those are some of the bigger pillars that I am trying to encourage. Just reach out to them, but also hopefully get back some feedback from the community. So if that is the mantra, then it feels like all of the rest is sort of should fall into it.
Yeah, so just adding to that, share information about the city council or city government?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So now let's go back to the chart. So I think we covered all of that.
Clear or smart? So we're not putting any limits, is that what we?
No dollar limit.
There's no limit as long as it has the council member specifically, right?
It's related directly to a council initiative that the member endorses.
Can I ask for one?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, okay, hold on. So, yeah, you go first.
I'm just wondering, can it be referenced to the council member or use of the comprehensive, like, city council, like, seal logo, things like that? I'm just trying to think about like, space saving, you know, like, you may, some of us have longer names than others. Like, what if you run out of space? And you're like, can we just put like, sponsored by Salt Lake City Council? Does it have to be the name of the council member?
No, I don't think so.
It can be either or, that's my request.
I think it, yeah, I think as long as it clearly is like, yeah. Because I, I just want to make sure that we can draw the distinction between, I'm sorry, I can't think of a better example, but like, the lawn signs for the community council versus like a postcard for the community council, but it talks about the council member. To me, those are.
That says something like, come talk about the budget with Chris Wharton.
Yeah, and like, and meet Santa Claus, and like, whatever.
Right.
Could I suggest to Councilmember Young's question? Could it, could we shorten it, like, to still reference the district? So council district seven?
Yes, that would be great.
Because I do think it's different when it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Representing the whole body.
Cool, love it, yes.
Okay, but if it doesn't have any of those things, then, then the limit is, it's zero. You don't get anything. But if it does have those things, it's unlimited.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Events and gatherings.
Oh, real quick.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're okay, on the advertising, before we move on.
Yeah.
Just because it says et cetera, I just do want to bring up, I'd like to exclude billboards. You can purchase billboards with the allotted amount we have.
Oh.
We don't have to, but I just wanted to point out that you could purchase billboards. You could also purchase digital boards. So I could, in theory, purchase an ad spot at S E G's future capital city, at their arena. And I just think that's something to consider.
You want to exclude that?
You want to add it?
No, 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 no. It, I think it's included right now because it says et cetera, I think by this legally. So I was just suggesting there's other forms of advertisement that maybe we'd want to limit.
Ultimately, my sponsorship of Rose Park Baseball is an advertisement because we have a banner there with a QR code that takes you to the city council landing page. And, you know, so I think like, yeah, there's a lot of things comprehended there that.
Ultimately, if it meets that mantra of like communicating, you know, things that we're doing, and, you know, I think it's still appropriate. But it, it really needs to refer back to the mission or something that highlights some of the work that the city is doing for the neighbors.
So, sorry, so do you want to propose a limit on billboards?
No, I just wanted to bring it up to see what the body, because I, I think, again, like, I'm fine with the discretion of each individual person as they get elected. That's what elections are for also, but I just wanted to point that out.
Oh, man, I would, I would love to see the reaction if a council member paid for a, an outdoor billboard. I feel like that would be negative.
I'm sure it will be fun to hear.
I do, I do want to save you from that.
Twitter is warming up.
Okay, so do we want to say like, no billboards then?
Well, okay, here's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I know we said no limits. You know, the cheapest billboard you could buy is $10,000, I think, for a month. What if we limited to, not dimensions, but what if we limited it to, like, the capacity? That to me seems very, like, you could buy one billboard in a random spot, and that, that doesn't seem like a good use of funding, but I'm not gonna challenge that. So I'm, I'm wondering like.
Let, let me say that one of the fun, brainstorming ideas I have related to trains and all the fun things, it do, do include one of those small billboards by the train tracks that is right there to try to seek feedback from the, so, and this is not a thing that has my face or even my name, right? Like, it has, again, it's a draft and still hasn't even came to fruition because I am not very good at following up with things apparently these days. But, but again, I don't know if I want to necessarily limit. I, but I will seek feedback.
Could we say, like, if any expenditure is more than 30%, 50% of the communications budget, it bears review by co-council, you know, like, it bears some kind of review? By chair by chair, by? I, I could be persuaded into a lot of different things. I don't, I really hate creating policing for each other. I think that makes everything really uncomfortable, but, I mean, like, like, like.
Here's another.
Like, if we're gonna do one big.
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry, I got excited.
It's okay, let's go to Sarah first and then you.
So I don't, I don't love the idea of like, charging the leadership to be like, you, but not you. Like, ideally, a good policy doesn't need a police officer. It's like, clear, like, yes, you're in line with the policy, or no, you're not. So I don't know, that, that gives me pause. Thank you for letting me share.
Yeah. Lopez Chavez?
Oh, no, I was just gonna point out, or the mobile electric billboards that you might see in downtown now.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, we probably just have to let the voters be the referendum.
Yeah, for sure, I'm fine, I just, I just wanted to point it out. I was like, just know that we're allowing that.
Again, again, it's the budget side of the house, but you also have to, my concern more is on the, on the election cycle. Because you, the city paying for a big billboard close to the elections, I mean, it's like, why is the city paying for your name, your face on a billboard?
But we have a policy.
And I know, that's what I'm saying, is that, that has to be, we need to make sure that, that is clear because we don't want you to get in trouble.
Correct.
But you're also gonna get the city in trouble if we do something of that nature. But again, on some of this stuff, I think of it as, if you want to spend $10,000 of your $16,000 on putting your face on the things.
Yeah. I just, but, we, we're gonna have time limitations on all of this so that you can't do that as to like supplement a reelection or something. Okay, all right, so we're gonna just keep that the way it is for now. Okay, let's move on to events and gatherings. Does anyone have an objection to any of the ones under events and gatherings?
For council members.
For council members, for council members.
Because again, this is like, some, some ideas are generated from the council members. Others are generated from the community, is that right?
Right.
Which ones?
So this has the same distinction as the communication pieces?
Yeah, I see what you mean, yeah.
I have some semantics.
Yes.
Second one, it talks about social comma fun events. Not saying that they shouldn't be fun, I hope that they're fun, people don't come to unfun events, but I, I would say that a community council member-led events, or, you know, something along those lines. Because it sounds like they were throwing a birthday party there. Because it sounds like they were throwing a birthday party there, as much as I would love to throw those. I am not a very fun birthday party goer, but I, so I think that clarifies what we're talking about, what, with the social community council led events. And then on the rental cost booth reservations, I wanted to add a little language to that descriptive, you know, to, to the tone of opportunities for, for the city government, for city government visibility, you know, that we're just not, or city government or city council visibility, or you know, talking about in general what we're doing here. But in, in general, I don't necessarily have concerns about the use to the first column if there, we should limit the use for any of those, if those caveats are added to. It's on rental cost booth reservations, is basically adding some language that refers to opportunities for city government visibility or city council government visibility, or you know, the, the work that we're doing here. And it, it basically, I want a little more meat to that descriptive. Just now the council member just showing up, you know, it's like, are you showing up as a council member? Are you showing up as a candidate? Are you showing up as a neighbor? What are you showing up for? You know, and I, I think it's the idea of that you're representing the city and the city council, the city council in those events. We have, many of us have many, multiple hats, so I wanted to just clarify what we are showing up for.
So I would just add a sentence at the end that says, increase the visibility of the council member and/or city initiatives.
I like it.
Okay. So I'm going to propose, does anybody have any objection to these four categories under events and gatherings?
Just have a question.
For the council member only. Okay, do you have an objection or do you have a question?
I just have a question on, see like, go ahead.
Hey, you first and then Councilmember Lopez Chavez, go do it.
My question more is like, say that Nwasechalo has a fest, or Yocrest has a festival. It's not organized and hosted by me. It's organized and hosted by them. I, I may or may not be there because I may or may not be around that timeframe, so.
Second column for an outside request.
Yep.
So we would, I think we need to tweak the definition.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, request outside, I got you, okay.
Can I take that as an opportunity to clarify what Councilmember Puy said? So I know fun events might not be the right language, but I do think it's trying to make a distinction between like a town hall type of, come and hear me.
It makes sense because now if you have, if, you know, if it's not community, is community led and no council led, it makes sense to now take that out of there. Fun, sure, fun event it is.
We're social event, entertaining event, something, okay.
I like a fun.
I do, I do the holiday thing to celebrate.
I was going to say, a lot of the holidays, like social.
Social event covers it.
Gotcha.
But it's council, yeah, if a council member wanted to have like a quarterly party and it was just a party, but you could come and talk to the council member, I mean, I don't think that's the best use of your funds, but I don't think it's wrong.
Yeah. And you can't buy alcohol or anything, so you're not throwing a rager.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, you know, staff knows this. Last year, a neighbor hosted a movie night and I wanted to continue that in East Central and Central City, you know, and someone might decide that's not a great use of funds. We saw families that I've never seen and toddlers gathered. And I found like, it, it was such a great way to connect with the families in the district. But my original comment I wanted to bring up real quick was I just wanted to propose some scenarios and see if we, if that would fall within proper use of the funding, which is if somebody was, I'll use the church I prescribed to, but let's say me being Catholic wanted to sponsor a Catholic or a, a celebration at the cathedral or something like that, something that distorted or included my specific prescribed belief, religious beliefs, you know, would that qualify? Or is that something we'd want to distinguish?
So there is a section in the policy.
Because other, other councils across the country do this, so just want to clarify it.
Well, and I think it goes to, like if you're participating in the first communion at the Guadalupe school, right? Like, like that's different than renting their facility too, because.
Like I rented the parish hall, but like what if I kept hosting events at the parish?
Right. Or at a steakhouse or something, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that is a good question.
Yeah, there's a section in here, and I'm sorry, I'm feeling to find it right now, but where all events would be free and open to the general public and we could add language to that.
Okay.
That is, like there's not a religious affiliation or there's, we could add something to it if you wanted to make it.
I think that'd be, yeah, if there's a way to kind of neutralize language so that there isn't that. The other scenario I wanted to propose was, I'm just making these up, but they're running in my head was, you know, I have a best friend that owns, quite literally have a best friend that owns a business in town, and I keep hosting my events regularly at that business.
Yeah.
Location and I'm getting charged for it. Would that qualify?
Repeat the example.
Uh huh, yeah. So the hypothesis is, as the council member in District Four, I have befriended a business owner in District Four and I keep throwing my monthly engage with AVAs at this business.
Yeah, or worse, it's the council member owns the business.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
See, there's no rules anymore. Insider trading school.
That's a tough one.
To put it on the record, the president does do this, practices.
Do we, is it just, is it just a disclose thing?
Yeah.
Is it a Clarence Thomas, Harlan Crow thing?
Well, I, yeah, I do think.
Financially.
Yeah. Okay, why don't we?
Okay.
Because this is, I think we could probably come up with a lot of hypotheticals. Why don't we ask city attorney's office if they can?
Find language.
Put a caveat on like the social events part that talks about like, you know, not doing it to like enrich one business and then definitely like, if it's a council member that owns their own restaurant, that they're not going to keep hosting things and then charging the city. And I'm sure you can come up with, with something that would, would capture the concern.
Yeah, I think primarily we'd be looking at Salt Lake City Code 2.44040, the conflict of interest ordinance for guidance, and I'm guessing your policy manual may address that. Additionally, on top of that, we'd want to also make certain we consider the Utah Municipal Officer and Employees Ethics Act as well. So.
Great.
Staying on the, the right side of those would be advisable.
Great. Okay. Okay, okay. Yeah, great. Big old asterisk on all of it.
All of it.
Yeah.
Hey.
One more.
Yes, and then we're going to vote.
Yeah, on the, on the social side of the house, so I have a community council chair, former chair, like a tribute to somebody who's, you know, at a care facility at this time, and we want to do a tribute. So is that considered under the social and fun events? Doing a tribute, having a, you know, open to the public? Would that be under this social? Is that, I mean, is, I'm just asking a question.
What is that?
We're just tributing to someone who's.
Do a tribute to someone?
Yeah, like, yes.
Like an event, you've invited people almost, it could be a memorial or.
It could be a memorial, it could be hopefully not a memorial in this case.
That's a social event, I would say.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Just, just asking a question.
Okay, so.
It's not required.
Okay, so I'm saying everything under here, given the, the legal limitations that we're going to, to attach later, are we all in favor of these being unlimited if they are sponsored by the council member or planned by the council member?
Yes.
Go ahead, share your feelings. Okay, now let's talk about if they're not. Do we want to put a limit if it's us paying for other people's parties or other people's?
I think the rental, the booth and the rental cost covers the appropriate interaction for us with other people's things. If we're going to something that is initiated, like this Saturday, I'll be at the Rose Park Community Council Festival. I have a table there with information about everything going on in the city. I've got my West Side Best Side shirts and we're going to give out some snow cones too, right? Like, like all, they can go do whatever else they want, but that to me feels like the appropriate level that something is planned by someone else.
It could be a similar caveat to what you put on the written communication items, that there has to be time made available for a council member or obviously the council member would be welcome, something needs to say that, give credit for sponsorship to the council member.
Well, I was thinking more like, what if they don't want to do that? And there's just an event that's happening in our district and they just want us to kick in money and they're, we're not offering, like there are no booths and there's not really a speaking opportunity, but they're like, hey, can you help sponsor this? I, I don't.
Isn't that like the tiny porch thing in your?
Hold on, hold on. Councilmember Lopez Chavez, and then we'll come back to you. But, but that's more what I'm thinking about this, with this question is what if, if it's not, you know, there's no booth, there's no speaking opportunity, they just want you to contribute because it's happening in our district.
So that would mostly be under the social event category? Because if it's a district meeting or town hall, then it would be, you could have that opportunity or the booth or a small group meeting. Is that fair to?
I mean, you're saying that a social, it's, it's community, sorry, I'm trying to.
You're okay, you're okay.
So clarifying your, your question because I don't think that was captured, right?
Right.
So the, so this is an event that is happening that we are not organizing and they're not giving us an opportunity to booth or, or giving us a, the name recognition or the, the district recognition or the council recognition that, you know, the, the ordinance or the, you know, the rule requires. So, you know, what is the question there is like, are we putting a limit to something like that where we are not getting anything back? They're just asking us for money to support their event. Is that, will you, okay. So we putting a limit to that?
I just wanted to provide a relevant example. A community council in District Four received ACE funding and then came back and expected a match from the council office. And in this example, I said no, because I deemed it inappropriate and there wasn't, I, I didn't find, I kind of asked myself these types of questions. Is there value? Do I have to pay for the table? What else am I providing, right? And outside of that promotion? So I'm in favor of limits, actually. I, I think that there is a misunderstanding of what this comms budget is for and I'd like to have some clarity. And it's not just community councils necessarily. I think any community organization or nonprofit should be able to at least request and then leave it to the council office or the council member to then disseminate that information and decide. But I, I would like to see limits on this because I, I have seen this misconstrued with other funding mechanisms within the city and it's all funding from the city. Even if it came from the ACE fund, it's funding from the city. It's not funding from just the mayor's office or just the city council.
Yeah, it's still tax dollars.
Exactly.
And if they were giving you a booth, then you could have chosen to support it, right? But if they're not giving you an opportunity to highlight, you know, then it falls into this gap that we're trying to discuss right now.
Councilmember Young?
So I think one of the challenges though is also like that I'll say I've run into is that sometimes these are like really good, you know, like community events and they're almost cost prohibited by city event fees. And so to be able to say like, we want to run electric or we will have trash pickup or we will have, you know, the relevant, you know, barriers and stuff like that. And so I think that that's, it's just like another, another lens to it. And I think that, you know, following the same, you know, from above, being able to say that on the event, you know, communication that it says like a sponsored by, like District Seven, you know, for Salt Lake City Council or something like that, to make those events so that they're not, you know, where it's possible to be able to cover existing city fees for the actual event to transpire, like I wonder if that's possible.
No, I, I think what you just described is what we just voted on and said that that's okay.
Okay.
What I'm describing is, is I think.
Like I have an example, the porch fest, they don't allow us to participate or anything, but they'll ask for our funding to pay musicians. And, you know, to me, I'm like, that, that's great, but this is not the funding source for that.
Right. So I think we should say, but you had an example of a school function, a school fair or something? Was that you?
I don't think so.
Does someone donate to like a school fair?
I did.
Oh, you do.
I do, but they give me a booth every time.
Oh, they do? Okay. Well, then maybe this is just like, I don't know, I, I, I feel like there, I feel like I've gotten requests before that was like, we're having, the community council's having a party. And we don't have enough money. Can you kick in money for it? And there's not, it's not speaking, there's no promotional material, they just want the money.
Hmm.
And, and I feel like, I, I mean, I would say no to that, but there might be a situation where someone might say yes to it, but I think that it, that it, I would not be okay with that being unlimited because it is taxpayer money.
Can I just, one of the later policy questions is for uses like this where there are other pots of money available in the city, like the ACE funds that Councilmember Lopez Chavez brought up, the council could decide to set aside a different amount within the ACE funds bucket to say this is available for these types of uses under these circumstances and have it run through that process instead of it being a second separate source of funds where applicants can go to ACE funds and to their council member to ask for funding help for the same type of thing. And it could be, it, it's always awkward, right? When you're asking a general fund office to contribute money to an event so they can pay general fund fees. It's, it's just such an oddity in the city, but that is one of the original intents of what the ACE fund was going to help offset for event costs. And so it may be something where the council decides, does it make sense to change the ACE fund process and budget to make money available for this type of thing? And are you finding new money to do that? Or do you take? I don't want to suggest taking money from your communication budget, but you know, like somehow if you know you're going to spend $2,000 on that each year, would that be the source of funds to create a new pot, but have it run through the ACE fund process?
And I don't know if I am ready for that because that's not a case that has happened to me. And I'm not sure if it's happened enough, but you know, but I, I think that maybe there is a, a feeling that maybe we should put a limit to that section if it's outside and we're not getting any, any benefit, like benefit directly to tie it up to the council. So do we feel like, you know, maybe a 10%, you know, of the budget, it's a good limit for that? I feel like it's.
That's fine. Let's do that.
If there's no credit to council sponsorship or if there's no opportunity for council members to participate.
Correct, it's the outside.
Because my, just using my example of Nwasechalo, I kind of just gave them a limit of, I think it was $3,000. I said, hey, I'll give you $3,000 or $2,500. And, but they, they offered, I mean, I think Public Lands and the city had a booth there. I think I could have, if I said, oh yeah, I'll, I'll put a table up. They offered that, but I also gave them, I just personally just gave them a limit to say, hey, $2,500. So, but they were offering me a booth.
Oh, they were? Okay.
They, they were, and you know, they were probably also going to say, hey, let you, you know, put your label, your logo on. But that's kind of separate from what we're asking for here. If they didn't offer you a booth, but I would still say, if they didn't offer you anything, 10% is probably right. So $1,600.
I think it's fine, yeah, I think it's fine with the 10% and it has to be to it a nonprofit, not a for-profit. And then, or a community like festival or whatever, maybe they don't have an entity, but like, you know, it's not to buy tickets to, you know, a concert or something.
It has to be in your district.
Right, and it has to be in the district.
And free and open to the public.
And free and open to the public. Okay.
Okay. So if there is council, a council member role available or sponsorship credit given, is there a different limit?
No. No, we already voted on that.
Yeah, there's no limit on that.
We already voted on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That there's no limit for that, for an outside request?
No, from the outside is a 10% request, a 10% limit. From the, from internal, there is no limit.
Right.
But the, but.
Sorry, but there's a distinction on outside requests as well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, but for whether there's a council member role or credit for sponsorship.
Yes.
If there is a council member role or sponsorship credit given, is there a higher limit than 10%?
I see.
Yes.
I see. Okay.
And my limit right now is basically $3,000. And my limit right now is basically three thousand dollars, which is my personal limit on my budget.
Okay, do you wanna say you can go up to?
That's twenty, that would, twenty, that's 20%, thirty-two hundred dollars, 20%.
Okay, second, okay. So philosophically here, why are we limiting this category when it has the exact same criteria and constraints as it does, as did the newsletters? Like, I don't understand putting a limit on this one and not the others.
Yeah, that's a good point too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's not that.
Yeah. That's fine.
Unless there's no council role or.
Right, but I, I thought that's a missed category.
Yep.
It is.
So can you just help me, can we just do a thought exercise and come with?
I think they were lost again.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, so if a council, can I try something?
Yes, please.
Sorry, okay, so if a council member comes to their liaison and says, we wanna throw a town hall or a social event, that is, the council member is hosting, you're showing up, you're telling us what you want, you're saying, I want this type of refreshment, I wanna hold it here, all of those things are determined by the council member. And we say, that is, you can do that, that's all totally allowed to, no limit for the council member other than your total fund, right? If, there are two types of requests that we get from outside organizations. One is, we're throwing a party, we're deciding where, we're deciding who, we're deciding what we're, food we're having, what music, all the things. There is no role for the council member, there's no booth, there's no speaking opportunity. And there's no place where we're gonna give you sponsorship credit, but we still want your money because this is an expensive party.
And that's 10% limit.
And that is, what you guys just said is 10%. The second type of thing from an outside request is, we're throwing a neighborhood party, but we are gonna have a program or there are gonna be booths and we would love you to come and participate in that, but it's still our event. And we want, and we can give you sponsorship credit and you can come and show up and talk and people, we'll tell people you're available. And I don't know if that's a 10% limit or if that's unlimited, but that's a different category.
Why is the difference of that and a booth rental? Cause to me, what I'm seeing is like, so let's use the West Side Coalition as an example. They do district meetings twice a year that are large enough for you and I and the mayor's staff all come and we all have booths. So we're not sponsoring the district meeting, we're buying the booth, right? I, I really am struggling.
Where there aren't booths, but they will still say.
Right, which is why I think what we should do to make it simple is eliminate the outside category. And under the booth, rental cost booth, then it should be speaking opportunity or sponsorship credit. Because I, then it eliminates the possibility that anyone is just doing something for fun and, or just doing something because, you know, they think it's a priority that needs to be addressed and they put you in a position that's.
I think we are in agreement on this one. The, the, or at least what I heard is that there is no limit on, on community organizations that are giving us credit, but they are the ones organizing. At least that's what I understood.
Yeah.
So there's no limit, okay. I think that answers that question.
So it feels like we're needlessly complicating this section. The newsletter seems like the request comes from internal or external, but this seems like we're needlessly complicating.
Does.
Because either we're initiating it and there's no limit or we have a, we can rent a booth, we can have a speaking opportunity, we can have a sponsorship credit.
It's just saying rental booth means, rental booth means we're renting from someone else and that's what like you're getting to. It's like we have sort of approved it.
Right, like I'm.
When you say, but, but it's been in the category that is council initiated versus not council initiated. But ultimately, we are on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay.
Speaking or sponsorship.
Everyone agree with Ali's summation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, our last category is sponsorship.
That's, um, yeah, okay, we got it, yes. Done, next. Sponsorship donations to nonprofits. Okay.
I really struggle with this one. As a nonprofit leader, I struggle with this one.
I do too. I think that, um, the, you know, I don't know what scenario, uh, if it doesn't fulfill any of the other opportunities above, you know, they have an event and we wanna support and we also have an opportunity for, uh, for us to table. Uh, or we have a, you know, if they don't have that, then they have, we have a 10% limit. Um, we are supporting them with some materials or, or some of that. I, I just don't know why it would be appropriate for us to, uh, to support, uh, you know, that, I can just justify in my mind coming from the communications budget.
Victoria, I think that this would apply to the Rose Park Baseball sponsorship.
Except that it's advertising because I had the communications team put something with a QR code and that was the basis of us agreeing to it.
So we'll just need to clarify, cause I think I had been thinking about it, like it's a donation to a nonprofit.
No, it was, it was, it was a sponsorship. There's, a donation to a nonprofit isn't a sponsorship. A sponsorship in nonprofit talk is a very different thing. It's a transaction where you're giving money for a certain agreed upon outcome. A donation is where I love your mission, wanna see it continue, Wasatch Community Gardens, I want you to have more seeds, here's two hundred dollars.
Okay.
And that's a totally different thing. And, and yes, you could earmark it for very good things, but it just seems really arbitrary and right now, we're all generally in alignment with one another. But what happens if that's not the case always, this sets up a lot, a possibility for a lot of tensions and a lot of difficulty.
I, council. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I also um, struggle with it as a, as a use of tax, okay, I, we have, when people wanna come to the city and ask for something for taxpayer dollars, we have a process for it for everything except this. And I can't support that.
Has anyone, I, I've never made a donation to a nonprofit. Every time I've given it to Rose Park Baseball, we have gotten something in return. The, the QR code that's currently on the field that you can go right now and it takes you to our landing page, you know? Um, the, the credit on the, the webpages and in the social media, right? So for me, that functions, I wouldn't just go give them five hundred dollars to go buy bats.
Okay. So.
What if we clarify that this is not allowed?
Yeah.
And just, just close, leave it at that.
Okay.
I would be, I would just drop hold out with you.
All in favor?
You're voting yes if you agree that it's not allowed, right?
Yeah, so, okay, should communicate, should council members be allowed to make donations to nonprofits from their communications budget?
They should not be.
You confused, you confused me.
Changed the question.
Okay. Um, so, um, what?
Is there anything outside?
What about this process here? Or the, um, um, the outline on the back?
Yeah, if I can just run through these as quickly as possible.
Sure.
So for the outside requests, as you guys have defined, um, just to make sure that the agreement and understanding with the outside org, outside requesters clear, we're thinking that we could institute a little process from the staff level that would include, um, that the request should be made in writing, that contributions would be made on a reimbursement basis, meaning they would submit an invoice or receipt before getting the city funds. Um, that, um, sorry, and I'll just insert in there that, um, Kira and Cindy had worked on almost like a questionnaire that would basically walk people through these criteria that you're outlining in the policy. So that what the purpose of the event is, what the benefit of the event or mailing is, um, and just confirming that those things exist for their request and that that written information would be received, shared with the council member in question for their review and approval. And then once approved, um, that it's consistent with the policy and that you wanna spend your funds that way, that then the go-ahead would be given to the outside requestor. And then the, the funds would be reimbursed once a receipt or invoice was submitted.
I love that, especially if it is a clear, maybe legal form or online form or whatever it is, but there is like, you know, all these steps and the, the expectations are set from the form that they need to, you know, they need to fall within these categories about like, how do you give credit, you know? And these are the approved ways generally of giving credit to the position and whatnot. So then it makes it less awkward for us also, um, you know, and it clarifies that they have fulfilled that and they report back that they have done that and they can show it to, to the process. So I prefer, I like this.
And then these other things, I think you guys have already talked about, so the answer is basically.
The only one I'm concerned about is the last one. Um, recognized community organization, it limits it only to community councils, correct?
No, there are other recognized community organizations that are not community. I don't have the complete list at hand, but I don't know, for example, like Rose Park Baseball, since that's been an example we've talked about. I don't know that they're on our RCO list.
I, unless we're gonna start getting real active on that RCO work and make it a more significant functional term, I don't know that I buy into that one.
So it could be an organization that has, is recognized nonprofit? It doesn't have to be on the city's list?
Would we wanna say like and limit it to Salt Lake City based nonprofits?
I'm just trying to think of examples, like I don't wanna.
What about a community trusted organization and then, you know, it's a little more, you know, like a, a, it's a nonprofit that is doing something in there or is a baseball, a sports team or is a community council? So I don't know if we can, if we need to define that a little more, but something that is an umbrella for all of this.
Sure.
All of the above.
Well, and if we're doing it on a reimbursement basis, it seems to take away a lot of a risk, right? So like you said, if you have a group of neighbors who are celebrating the end of the construction season or something and it's a coalition of trusted business leaders or something who are gonna do it, if we're doing it on a reimbursement basis, it takes away a lot of the risk. And for me, it makes me less, like I need to buy into this concept because we have those safeguards, right? Like, your business leaders could submit receipts for whatever it was you had agreed to pay for and we would know that that's what it went for and. I, that's what I'm struggling with. I think the other things catch enough accountability that I don't need this last one. But I don't, that's why I wanted to bring it up, I don't know.
As long as it's non, non-for-profit, um, I think that's probably one of the only caveat.
Be a formal organization.
No, 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 it could be a community council, it could be a base.
Event doesn't generate profit.
No, that the organization necessarily is not a business, right, like that, you know, not that the place cannot be hosted and a business, I'm saying that the, the purp, the sole purpose of the, the sole purpose of the thing is for, a for-profit goal. Um, but beyond that, I don't care if it's a nonprofit, it's a sports team or.
Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Oh, thanks. I, I just wanted to bring up geography again and geographic proximity of expenses. Just because I came up with a scenario in my head where, um, we have lots of citizens that wanna support the uh, Sail Fest at the Great Salt Lake, which is brand new. Um, and let's say they offer sponsorships, it's not in District Four, but I wanted to help bring attention to the Great Salt Lake. I think we passed in one of the straw polls, something that would limit that as a barrier. Um, and so I just wanted to provide some scenarios that I thought of where we may wanna participate or maybe someone wants to go up to the U and participate um, in a sponsorship where it's outside of the district, but you're gonna be in proximity to a lot of individuals, um, that are alumni. So I, I just wanted to raise geography again as something that I don't wanna limit for that reason, other than I think we could say the event must take place within Salt Lake City boundaries.
We haven't limited geography, have we?
Yeah, we did earlier, right?
We said in our districts.
Yeah.
Oh, in which section?
Uh.
Events and gatherings.
Mm-hmm. In what?
In the events and gatherings.
May I also? We, we just straw pulled it and we all said.
Um, well, I, I think that's a valid question. I mean, I would also point out like, I mean, we have two pending budget amendment items that would violate this policy. So how are we gonna square that hypothetical and these two pending budget items? Um, and that's kind of the point of this, the reason why we're having this conversation now is because we didn't have clarity on the policy.
There was something last year and I'm trying to remember what it was. And I wanted, I came to you all and I said, can I do it out of my communications budget? And you were like, actually, it belongs with the whole council. And you, you all helped me and maybe is there a function for us having, you know, the whole council work together on certain things, like Sail Fest might be something that's not really appropriate for you because how many District Four people might be out there anyway, right? Or, but maybe it's appropriate for all the council, in which case you just need to convince three of us to buy into it with you, you know?
Are you thinking that would be through like a budget amendment process?
I.
I think that's, I mean, just for the sake of transparency and, and, and if we wanna do, if we wanna do something like that, I, uh, ultimately, we're sort of creating a lot of off-ramps to a policy. Um, I, I, I agree, I think that ultimately, we can always with four votes amend even the policy, right? Um, so I prefer that we don't embed in the policy all of these off, off-ramps right from the get-go. Um, just to like, if opportunities that are very unique race, let's discuss and we could potentially approve them, but I, I would say that just to maybe summarize some of the, the, the issues here is that, um, I, one of the things that we, I, I hope that we clarify on this is that donations to nonprofit when there is no benefit to, to us is not, you know, not approved and it's not inappropriate use for us. Uh, and donations to a for-profit, uh, causes in order, you know, that's something that, to me, wasn't an app, uh, a purpose of, of communications. Uh, and, and I don't know which other of the pieces of this we had, um, you know, concerns about. Wouldn't clarifying this answer some of the concerns or is there any other things?
Do we just grandfather in those others two, other two, saying they were initiated before we pursue clarity?
I, I sincerely think that one of the, you know, I actually think that one of them is not really an appropriate use uh, of the, of the funds. Uh, so I, uh, I think that sets a bad precedent and, you know, I, it is not a community, you know, driven, uh, and I think that that is, uh, to me is one that I'm not able to, uh, to connect and I don't think that the, I think that, I'm hoping that this conversation here, I got to that. So, um, is there any of the sections here that needed to be clarified about like how we go about the communications budget? I know, sure.
Um, any, sorry, any other sections?
Is there any of the sections that we discussed right now needed to be clarified as far as like the, 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 the requests that are pending?
Yeah, I mean, this is the reason we put this discussion on for now and we re, put those two on hold was to put a policy in place, um, or to, to, you know, resolve. Um, because this, the, these two requests that have come up have like shown the, that the problems with our current policy. Um, so, um, yes, Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Thanks, yeah, just cause you brought up, um, you said that there's two outstanding items that are not covered. So I just wanted to say, I think this policy does clarify both of them and I don't know if you're referring to the art project. It's a nonprofit that's leading this and guiding it. And I think under this policy, but correct me if I'm wrong, I imagine, it, it doesn't have to be this example, but I think, you know, someone could, let's take the Jordan River Trail, you could have an or, nonprofit work on an art project that said sponsored by, you know, council District Two, for example, and I think that would cover it.
Well, I, ultimately, because it's a nonprofit and it's a donation to the nonprofit, I, this clarifies to me that it isn't, uh, that it isn't an approved expense. Uh, and, uh, you know, there are avenues to seek funding, but it, because it's a nonprofit, uh, that is not an approved.
And I think this gets back to the question I was asking of the, I think the distinction between donation and sponsorship is harder to define maybe for us people who aren't in the nonprofit world, but I do think it's in the eye of the beholder what the benefit is from this.
It's general ongoing operations versus time-bound event-based.
I think that some people see that the, the benefit that you're getting from the donation to that non, the sponsorship in the nonprofit is a piece of public art. Do you see the?
Is there a QR code that redirects back to a landing?
If you ask them to put a QR code on it.
Put a plaque on it. I mean, I mean, I mean, like, I mean, honestly, that would satisfy me if.
I mean, I mean, I mean, honestly, that would satisfy me if this, this artwork graciously underwritten by District Four Council with a QR code that sends you to a landing page? Fine, like-
Here's another example. In San Diego, I saw they do, on their lighting posts, they do like this really cool doggy art thing where you pick up dog supplies. You could sponsor, I mean, I just think, I'm not trying to poke holes in it. When we were reading this, I genuinely was like, oh, that clarifies intent, use, purpose, and maximizes what it could be for. I think with the Mead Avenue one, I, what I'm hearing is, take the Mead Avenue, the meetup request, it can't be a gap for capital improvement or capital funds being raised. That's what I'm hearing, is that this policy can't fill a gap for capital funds, maintenance, ongoing funding, et cetera. What I'm hearing very clearly in this policy is it could be used to, I, I still see placemaking as a, I know it's not said, but I'm reading in some of the et ceteras, like signage, placemaking, signage by code meant the I love SLC sign is signage by code. You could, you could use that to pay for signage and it's SLC-based. So I just, like, that's the way I'm interpreting it.
Yeah, and I, I guess maybe I'm not interpreting it like that because of the donation to nonprofits, to me, was a close gap in there, and it was a no all along. So if we think that about entertaining a donation to a nonprofit with the caveat that if they throw a banner, if they throw a banner out there, will that go back to, you know, the other? I, I think that's, these are the poking of the holes that I, I think that an event is different than something that stays there when we're supporting something that is a gathering place, you know, and a gathering event for people that create connections versus supporting something that is like, you know, a place and a private, and a private piece of land. So I, you know, I struggle with that and I wonder if there is ways of clarifying some of that.
Yeah, yeah. I think we can find language. So another example I was thinking of in my head, Christmas Street, the Christmas Street signage, let's pretend that goes out and the community's raising funds and the council member, whoever wanted at the time, let's say they wanted a work or use this.
Yeah.
I would see it appropriate if the Christmas Street sign said, sponsored by, you know, city council or District, I think it's in D5, you know, Salt Lake City Council, District Five. I, I think we could argue that's something that creates a place of belonging and advertises the district.
How do we, how do we, so if I wanted to close that loop, how do, where do we need to clarify? And then, you know, ultimately, we vote, you know, and then we decide. But I, I really want, my concern is that we potentially could create all sorts of ethical problems as far as, like, you know, purchasing arts that will benefit a private entity. And that, to me, is a very, big concern. Even if they throw a party and it's a good place for, for us to meet neighbors, we have purchased a significant part of that with city funds without going through the procurement process and the transparency process of we gifting money because of our position, which I think it is problematic. So, but to acknowledge your point, which, you know, I think that this could be an interesting path, how do we, if I wanted to close that loop, how would I go about it? And I don't know how.
Yeah. That's a good point.
I mean, and Leahu and I can talk more about this. I think, in my mind, the, the distinction between donation and sponsorship seems to be where a lot of this is unraveling. Because what does it mean? Like, what is the threshold from, for one being converted to the other? Is it a QR code? Is it a plaque? Is it, you know?
And to me, it was a temporary use of, of funding for an event, right? Like, throwing a banner to a fence?
Well, the banner is permanent. The banner is there more than just the event. And it, you know, I mean, it's-
The event is the season. So the entirety of the season, when people are watching baseball games, when they're walking there, they can go and find information about the city.
Right. And, and to me, that is different than, you know, and is this place a city
It's Riverside Park.
Yeah, it's a property from the city that we own and it benefits everybody.
So I, I think that those distinctions all help. So it, the sponsorship of a nonprofit requires not just the, like, banner or something reflecting the sponsorship from the city, but that it also be on city property? Is that what I'm hearing?
That, to me, simplifies and makes sure that there is a clarity, that if we're benefiting and if we're putting art even, but it has to be something through the process of the city, it has to be in a city property, because then it makes sense. It's almost like, you know, we're, it falls within the CIP sort of in my mind, right? That we are requesting money for a city benefit that stays within the city, not a private entity. That, to me, seems like a good partnership. That's why I feel like the Mead Avenue is different because while there, there are some connections there, this is a community organization that sort of spewed from the community requesting funds for something that benefits all of them. And it's in a public space, it's under a freeway, so it's not, no one of those neighbors benefits from that donation. All of them do. So that, to me, is, is a caveat that I'm, I think is important.
Yeah, no, I think, I think those are all appropriate comments. Like, I think I am interpreting it slightly different. And I think at the end of this, it says any, you know, any continuation, if it needed to go into a project, could be in a budget amendment, and then it would go to the totality of the council. Like, I still see this as is, as a very fluid document that would allow anybody to come up with their, while this idea, as long as it fell within the confinement of this. I think you and I have a very different distinction on placemaking, and that's okay.
No, no, I think this is not about placemaking. I think, I think your ideas, you know, this idea is great. I just like the, the, to me, the ethical concern of putting fun, city funds into a private property is the, is the issue here at hand that I cannot, I can just cannot there. I, I cannot get there. The, the art idea is something that I love. You know, it's something that I would support. But if this piece of art was going to be donated to a median, you know, or a place that the city owns, that changes everything to me. If it was placed under a freeway, right? Like, you know, that changes everything to me. That, to me, qualifies in so many other ways. But because it goes into a private property, that, to me, creates all sorts of ethical problems that I don't know if I can justify in policy.
Yeah, that's okay. I think, I, you know, I, I'm not going to make up more scenarios other than, you know, the only thing I think, to think of is, this is not creating a new system to pay for the art. It's a contribution, one-time contribution.
How big is the contribution you're seeking?
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah. So, so it's not anything-
sizable.
Yeah.
You know, and I think, obviously, if it's not covered within here, there are other processes, doesn't eliminate the context or the request, at least the process of the request, I don't think, right?
I'll just say, like, what I've, I've told you before and I said at our last meeting, it's, I feel like there, I'm not opposed to the, necessarily opposed to the goal that you're trying to reach. I just don't think that this is the appropriate mechanism for that. And I think that we, we should look at, you know, what, what other options there are, either through the CRA or through ACE or whatever. But I don't, I, and I appreciate you acknowledging, like, that we're not trying to create, like, a, another, an alternate route for something that is, you know, a process already exists for. Like, that helps me feel better about that we're trying to get to a similar result, I think. Because I also don't want to, yeah, I don't want the, the communications budget of a council member to just be seen as, like, well, this is an easier way, or this is a way to, like, get ahead of other projects, or like, you know, I feel like I can, you know, get one particular council member to, to agree to this or something. Because then I think it makes, it potentially pits us against each other and it, it means that anyone in the city could come and try to pressure any one of us. So you almost get, like, seven bites at the apple. And I just don't think that that's what we want to do.
Yeah, that's great. I think that's fine. I'm happy with this. I think the only other thing I didn't notice covered is, like, recording, marketing. I know we have staff, but just in case, if we want, if someone wanted, I don't know, to hire a photographer, videographer outside of the comms realm. I know there's often times I go to events and our comms individuals are not available. And that's the only other thing I was going to bring up that I forgot earlier is that we haven't considered those cinematography services. Like, if someone wanted to produce a, I don't know, a five, 10-minute video docu-series about their district and tell the histories of the buildings or something in promotion.
Wouldn't that fall into, sorry?
Oh, no, you go ahead.
I'm just trying to think about how, I think those, you know, I have, I've seen similar constraints in you, you know, when, when trying to get, you know, visibility. I, I, you know, we have expanded the communications department quite a bit, and I think that there is maybe room for improvement as far as, like, you know, what does it mean, the liaison job and how, you know, we meet the, the communication needs from a council member or many of us. I, I'm not sure how do we prevent, you know, misuse, but at the same time, potentially allow for some coverage, right? Like, that, you know, am I hiring my body, right? Am I hiring my body because I like my body, but I'm going to get a set of photos, right, out of that? Ultimately, if we can acknowledge some of these questions, it's something to discuss. But I, I'm concerned, there is a section in this, at the beginning of this policy that talks that council members cannot add their own really- personal funds to, to it, just to, you know, make up for, for lack of funding. It feels, I wonder if the, the answer to that question is, maybe we should raise enough momentum within the council structure to change the communications department, which I have, you know, I, I led the conversation about changing how many liaisons we had, you know, three years ago. And, you know, I talked to almost every single council member to say we needed one for all of us, right? And helped other council members in supporting more staff for the communications department over the years within the city. So I open to discuss that. I just want to acknowledge the, the potential ethical problems of, like, us using the funds inappropriately. I, again, many of the things that I remember, Councilmember Dugan saying, many of these policies we make are not necessarily for us, but for, for, you know, future councils sometimes to make sure that there is no inappropriate use. But if there is a way of discussing that item, you know, I would love some feedback from, from staff about that one.
On this video, I would think that we also have an economic development group that does different things to promote the districts and stuff like that, and you can work with them. They do that during the different seasons. So I'm just worried about, like, back to the beginning, the public benefit piece of this whole pie. And I worry sometimes if we're trying to stretch that too much. And we're really going into some, you know, it's eight o'clock at night, we've been discussing this more than we've been discussing anything else today on the budget of five point, of 512 million dollars. We spent an hour, an hour and a half, an hour and a half on 16 times 7. So I'm just, I think we've exhausted the, the crowd. I think we got a good point here going forward. And I would like to call it a night.
Yeah. I think, I think that's a good, good observation and good points. I, I think the distinction that I will make is that the, that everything else that we discussed up until this point went through a process. And what we're trying to create here is a process to address things that haven't gone through a process. And that is a lot harder to do, even if it is a lesser amount of money. But, so I, I don't know if we want to, how, yes.
Will you allow me one more try to this? I, I felt like I know that I'm tired and I want to, I want to really go home. And I think all of us do have other things. And, but one of the things that I remember from the discussion that, you know, Councilmember Young brought up when we started this beautiful rabbit hole months ago was, can we highlight things that we have approved in the past to starting point? You know, have we, what things have we approved in the past as a starting point? Just to know, to get an idea of what we have done. And it feels to me that, per the discussion today, we narrowed down a little bit on that. But it feels to me that beyond the narrowing that we have done, it feels like everything is approved to that level. If it, if it goes beyond that level of what we have approved in the past and the narrowing that we have done with that 10% or the nonprofit, then it shouldn't be approved. And the council members should bring it up here for the full discussion with other council members to get an off-ramp, if you want to make a budget amendment or something like that. So I think that summarizes what I got from this, but maybe we all didn't get the same conversation. And I think it's good for us to clarify, but I wanted to just share my, what I took from the conversation today.
Yeah, thank you. Any other, any other comments to summarize? So, okay, so we have a policy here, or the makings of it. Staff is going to write this up based on the feedback that we have. But what I'm hearing is, is on things that don't fall within these policies, including the two items that we have that are on a budget amendment, like, we're going to need to, are going to have to come to the, to the full council for a decision. And I guess we'll just have to decide at that point, which is what we can do with these last two items. Is there any, and, and I guess if Councilmember Lopez Chavez, like, if you wanted to bring that other idea that you brought up, that would probably need to come to the full council again for an amendment to the policy.
Oh, an amendment to the policy?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Not any other process?
I don't, I don't, the, I mean, the one, like, the videography one?
Oh, sorry. I thought we were trying, oh, no, no, no. I was just bringing that up.
Yeah.
I don't see a use of it for myself. I just know that's something that could be considered in the future.
I see. Okay. So, yeah, we would need to amend the policy for something like that.
Or consider it in a budget amendment.
Or consider it in a budget amendment. Okay. So, okay. Any other thoughts on this item? Great. Thank you so much. We will be adjourned. And see you next Tuesday.